Good evening and welcome to the Middle Board of Education's regularly scheduled meeting on December 10th, 2012. Madam Secretary, would you call role please?
I'd be happy to. President Malt.
Here.
Vice President Wasserman.
Here.
And I'm here, Treasurer Oley.
Here.
Member Branstad.
Here.
Member Gordon.
Here.
And Member Kaminsky.
Here. We have a quorum, and thank you. I will make a note right now for those of you that didn't see it, and those in the audience, that we have a revised agenda that came up with some new information earlier this afternoon, so if you have the old one, please try to find a new one, I think they're all in the hallway. With that, we have a pretty lengthy consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like removed from that consent agenda? If not, we'll start off by just going through this very quickly. 2.1 is the approval of the last minutes from the meeting on November 26. 2.2 is the announcement of the resignations of the following staff members as indicated date effective. 2.3 is the following person has been recommended for employment, date effective. And 2.4 is the major change proposals are presented for the consideration back in October, and you have that in your consent agenda. And 2.5 is the approval to request an authorization of the payment of the following legal bills.
Move approval of consent items 2.1 through 2.5.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Oley, supported by Mr. Wasserman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Consent agenda is passed. Request to address the board. Anybody in the viewing audience that would like to come to the podium now, state your name, address, and your relationship to the district now would be the time.
My name is Rick Shaheen. I reside at 2600 Non-Burne Drive in Midland. Tonight I'm here as a citizen, a deeply fearful part of the greatest experiment in world history in this republic. Last year I came to this board and pleaded with you to take some action, however little, to resist the continuing damage done to this district by the state of Michigan, and especially by our state representative and state senator. Privately, three of you told me that you were engaged in discussions with these two men, and had hopes they would actually look out for the interests of the children of this community. It's a year later. The education proposal currently before the legislature, with little doubt of its passage, is not only worse than what had been done before, but it exposes Mr. Thomas and Mr. Mullenar as having no interest at all in equality of education in the Midland public schools. The plan they support was written by a man perpetually hostile to public education, covered by a fake institution to give it false credibility, and urged along by millions of dollars from people whose financial interest in profiting from destroying public schools should have sent our legislators running. They ran all right, away from our students and toward the donors. Why am I bringing this issue to this body? You are temporarily still public officials. The current legislature has engaged in tactics reminiscent of the 1930s. Passing laws without public hearings, locking citizens out of the people's house, and using power and wealth as its standard instead of the public good. Your time is coming. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Mullenar have little time for your input on what constitutes effective education for our community students. They do have plenty of time for lobbyists with deep, deep pockets who have sold Michigan a bill of goods. Their friends have told us that charters outperform traditional public schools. They lied. They said that the state curriculum would reflect local needs. They lied. They say that diverting resources to online providers will improve education, but the research already demonstrates that they lied. They say that local districts have to keep buildings maintained in case the state wants to have outside entities use them, but somehow that doesn't violate our local taxpayers' rights. They lied about that, too. What did this mean for the Midland public schools? It doesn't matter if you New Tech, or IB, or AP, or PYP. Soon, very soon, the state of Michigan will tell this district that it is failing, using artificial measurements to make sure it happens, and will force, quote, "corrective," unquote, "action" on us. They've already started. Your state legislators will be complicit in this obscenity, but hey, at least they're from a safe district. Over a year ago, I asked you to do what Tiny Breckenridge had done, and go on record opposing the state imposed power grab. Now, I ask you to do what large Bloomfield Hills and others have done, and take a public stand. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Mullenar have demonstrated their contempt for the opinions of this board and its direction for the Midland public schools. Please protect the tradition of local control by resisting those who would harm our community, the institution of thugs called the legislature.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to address the board at this time?
My name is John Gayno. I live at 4014 Lowell Court. This is the first Midland Public School Board meeting I've been to, but I've talked to Carl on the phone, and I listened to what some of the school representatives told us about New Tech Network. And I was very excited. I don't know what the previous gentleman was, if he was referring specifically to New Tech or not, but what I heard in that program, I thought was fantastic, and I applaud you as a board to take the initiative to do things different, because I think the public school system needs something different.
Nada, thanks. So should I repeat my name and address?
You can.
Sure.
Okay, John Gayno, 4014 Lowell Court, and I'm a parent of some students in Midland. And I went to a meeting at Northeast last Monday, I think it was, and you guys talked about the New Tech Network program that you want to pilot in Midland. And I thought it was the best thing I've heard in a long, long time. So I applaud you for looking at doing things differently in the public school, and specifically, I think it's the cooperation, collaboration, community environment that you're trying to pursue. So I, for one, am very excited about it. And as I said before, the mic was off, I don't know what the previous gentleman was criticizing you for. I just wasn't, I'm not sure what that is. I don't know if it's New Tech. I don't know what Senator Mullenar or Stamos were supposedly not supporting or doing poorly. But I, for one, applaud you, and I hope you continue that way. I think there's a silent majority that agree with you. There may be a local, or a minor contingent that doesn't, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else from the viewing audience that would like to address the board at this point? If not, we will close that portion of the agenda and move on to our more information from Mr. Ellinger on Midland Public Schools survey results.
Can I just clarify for our listening public? I think the previous speaker, our first speaker tonight in audience to visitors, was referring specifically to legislation called the EAA down in Lansing. We've had quite a discussion of that here in the community. I've addressed the Chamber Board of Directors. Actually, Mr. Wasserman joined, Mrs. Klein and myself, and Mr. Wasserman, and we met with our Senator and Representative Ramis Stamos, pardon me. We could go Friday on exactly those issues, and I've communicated that out to all the board. So Mr. Shaheen makes a very valid point that there are some real dangers involved in that legislation, and perhaps we'll have an opportunity to talk about that later in the meeting. Move to the next agenda item?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to invite William Sanamore from Cobalt Communication, Cobalt Community Research, out of the Lansing area to come up for those of you in our audience and our listening audience on TV. This is the guy you can blame for the 2,300 responses or so that we received. He's here tonight to really spend quite a bit of detail and take some time to talk about the survey and what its implications might mean for you as a Board of Education, as we make some decisions about the future direction of the school district, including potential bond election or a sinking fund that we could be looking at in this coming spring in the first week or two of May. So I'll turn it over to William. It's a fairly lengthy PowerPoint. We won't scare you by telling you how many slides there are. He's going to go through some of those more quickly than others, but you paid for this research. You have a copy of the PowerPoint and some other detailed information in front of you that I think you'll want to glance at as he walks you through this, and then afterwards we'll have time for the Board of Education for questions.
Thank you.
William, thank you for making the trip up.
It's my pleasure, and thank you for being here. It was very nice to work with the district and to work with the community as well, to gather some of these insights that we can share back with you, to guide your decision making, and hear the voice of the rest of the community. Let me give you a little bit of background. First of all, tonight, I'm going to be providing a summary.
William, we're going to want to pull the mic up a little closer to you, I think.
Can you hear me now?
You can pull it right up.
Okay, I'll get up closer. I'm going to be providing a summary. There is a tremendous amount of data that's available underneath this. I could literally go on for hours and hours, and Carl has asked me not to. Some background on Cobalt, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit research coalition. This particular program was developed jointly between Cobalt and the Michigan Association of School Administrators, and then also a company called CFI. They're the folks who actually administer the University of Michigan's American Customer Satisfaction Index. So the same science, the same folks who do the ACSI on a national level are actually the folks who did the crunching for you as well. I'm not going to go through a lot of detail on here, as far as why research matters. You've got the presentation itself. This is a community that seems to appreciate it. We had a great response. Bottom line, it really helps you guide decisions. It helps balance the concerns expressed by groups, vocal groups in the community. Helps you identify, are those vocal groups truly representative of what folks overall think, or is there a silent majority that has a different kind of opinion, a different kind of priority? So this is a useful tool to look at. Study goals, several things we wanted to achieve. First of all, we wanted to guide some of your resource decisions, look at service delivery baseline, so as you're going forward, you've got a quantitative mark on the sidewalk essentially that you can measure yourself from. Look at how well you compare with other organizations, not only other school districts across the state, but also other types of entities, private sector and public sector as well, and really to strengthen your outreach and communication, especially as you consider some of the bonds and millage things that are on your plate. Bottom line, I always like to throw this chart out early to let you know you did well. You scored a 73, that's your ACSI score, 73. It goes from a scale of 0 to 100, and to put that in perspective, the 2012 average Michigan school is a 65. A large district scored a 66, so you're well above that average benchmark. Areas where you can have the most impact on those scores are here. You've got curriculum, teachers, principals, and services. Those were the four areas that are most heavily leveraged toward improving your scores. Now let me clarify, when I talk about these are the ones with the most potential, it doesn't mean that you did poorly. Actually, you scored very well with these areas, but these are the ones that give you the most bang for the buck as far as moving that score up higher, if that makes sense. There were a couple of areas that we wanted to identify as well, that the community identified as focus areas, things that they would like you to really focus your efforts and resources. Those areas are college readiness, college preparation, the science, technology, engineering, and math, and small class size. Those were the three things that really came out that they wanted you to continue to work toward as you think about these larger questions. Yes, sir?
Could you clarify what the significance of the ACSI score is, what it means?
Sure. The ACSI score stands for the American Customer Satisfaction Index score. It is not a percentage. It's an absolute measurement from 0 to 100, so 100 being if you were absolutely perfect in every way, you'd have a score of 100. If you're absolutely horrible in every way, it would be a zero. So it's much more like a temperature kind of scale. Another thing that we wanted to look at is potential millage and potential bond as well. One of the things that we asked folks, we provided some background information, again very high level, because we didn't have space to go into a lot of detail, but just kind of first brush, if the election were held today, 46% of the respondents would support both the millage and the bond, if that election were held today. 30% are not sure, or they're undecided. 15% would support the millage but not the bond. 7% would oppose both the bond and the millage, and 2% would support the bond but oppose the millage. So there is a lot of inherent support in the community for the direction you're going. Again, working through the details is important. Bringing the community along with the details is important, but you're starting from a pretty strong place. You have a pretty credible image with the community, and that's something that does put you in a strong position. We asked, what are the two best arguments in support of a millage and bond? The two big ones, help prepare students for the future, and strong public schools are a good investment. That's what the community overall believes. Two best arguments against the millage and bond that you'd need to think about as you weigh your considerations, higher taxes and the economy is too weak. So those are things to consider. But again, if you look at the numbers here, you can see where the balance is in terms of where people would fall, again, if the election were held today. There were several open-ended questions that we asked in the survey, and you have those available to you. We didn't print them off because it would be a tome. There's a lot of information there. We did create a bubble chart which basically goes through all of the open-ended questions regarding the school's two best attributes. We set this up so that the words that came up more frequently were larger, just to give you kind of a graphical representation of what's in those comments. Top themes, good things about the school, best attributes are academic performance, teachers, quality of programs and staff. And sometime when you're feeling down, I encourage you to read through the open-ended comments. There's a lot of great things and a lot of great comments that the community offers for you. There are a number of different tools. I won't go over them in detail now, but again, this is getting down to that depth of information. Let me give you some comparisons. Again, your score for parents was a 73, for the community overall was a 72. And the reason I differentiate those two is we made sure we had a random sample of the community overall that represented voters across the community, and then we also did a lot of work just with parents specifically through the eBlast and also through the sampling. You can see that those scores are pretty close. To give you some context, school satisfaction, again, in Michigan is a 65, in the Midwest it's a 64, in the US it's a 61. So Midland did perform well at all levels geographically. Community satisfaction, how happy are people with the communities they live in? Again, you can see low 60s, counties usually around the low 50s. State of Michigan, people give the state a 44 on a scale of 0 to 100, so there are some opportunities for improvement. And to let you see what some other levels of contrast are, airlines get a 67, banks are a 75, postal services a 75, IRS is a 57, which is well above the state, and breweries score an 81.
That's what we need aspire to. It's going to be the brewery.
We talked about a tech program, but maybe there's some other programs that could be beneficial. Okay. I will talk briefly about the methodology. I know that there's some folks here and in the audience that are very interested in that methodology. Bottom line, it was a random sample for the piece that we were looking at, the voters and the community overall. We had 499 people respond to that random sample, very solid footing as far as that goes. And then we also had an additional set of folks respond, about 1,800 to the eBlast. So we have a huge depth of data that we can dive into, and we can cut up in a lot of different ways. And actually, in your packet on the last page of the eye charts, the very small printed graphs, the back page gives you the count by demographic group. So I'm not going to go over that here, but that is a resource available to you for the statisticians in the crowd. On those eye charts, on those cross tabs, something that we did is we broke down every demographic subgroup, and then we used what we call thermal mapping, just to highlight where the scores are high and where the scores are low. Red are lower scores, blue are higher scores. The reason this is useful is if, as you're looking at one of the questions across the top, you can scan down the column, and you can see if there's a difference in the shading, and that tells you where there's a demographic group that might be a little bit different than most people. There's a general tendency that regardless of demographic group, people tend to answer the same way, but there's a few differences there that are important to pay attention to. Let me talk about the research model. This is an input-output kind of model. When we looked at the benchmarking piece, and what are the drivers of citizen engagement or school engagement? Outcome behaviors there are on the far left-hand side. So the things that we looked at that help you see if people are satisfied, what's the evidence that people are satisfied? People remain, they keep their kids in the district, they speak favorably about the district, volunteer, participate in conferences, participate with various parent-teacher organizations and boosters and that kind of thing, participate in planning, and district brand image, so a number of perceptions that they have about the district. Those are kind of the outcomes that we look at, and that's driven by what we call satisfaction. And in the survey, as we go through the numbers, when we're talking about satisfaction, we're really talking about the perceived value that parents in the community have based on their experiences with the district. And those experiences are measured over here on this side, and that's everything from curriculum, ancillary services like food and transportation and so on, teachers, principals, facilities, safety and security, communication, website, and recent contact. So a number of things that go in and drive value, and the value in turn drives certain outcome behaviors and beliefs about the district. So it's kind of a flow that goes this way. And they all have a different level of impact. So one of the things that you'll see in a few minutes is looking at which one of these are pushing those numbers the most. Okay, this is the hardest chart to read in the whole thing. I apologize that it's a little bit dense, but we wanted to ask folks, what are the most important factors in choosing a school for their children? And so this is looking at both the Midland Public School parents, people who have kids in the district, people who have their children enrolled in another public school in blue. Green is people who have their children in a private school, purple in a charter school, the blue homeschool, and the orange is for those people who have children who aren't yet in the school system, so they're too young. A couple of things to point out, academic performance being number one, quality of staff being number two, then it varies a little bit for number three, between class size and location, location being more important for the public school students within the district. But I do like to point out that class size for that green group, the private school folks, class size is their number three issue as far as driving school choice. Looking at some of the outcome measures, the things that we're over on the far side of the chart, you have your overall ACSI score in blue, so Midland's always in blue. Michigan overall is in green, the gray is for other large districts across the state. So a couple of things to point out, generally, you perform very well compared to the benchmarks. You've got some high points, and you've got some low points, regardless of how well you performed to the benchmarks. I like to point out that participate in conferences is one of your higher areas, although you're a little bit below the benchmarks. Speak favorably about the schools, you're above the benchmarks. Keep children in next year, that's also a bit above the benchmarks, and it's above the 90, and above the 90 is an excellent score. So some good things to think about. One pattern that I noticed in the, in this piece that's different than what we see with other schools, is that the more participatory things are the things that you tended to have a little bit of a lower score on from parents. So if you look at participate in conferences, participate in parent organizations, participate in school planning, those are all a bit below the benchmark. So that's something for you to think about. Surveys are good at giving you indicators of what's going on, it doesn't necessarily answer why. So something you may want to think about is are there opportunities to reduce barriers and help parents participate more fully, based on your population and the types of jobs people hold here in the community? Okay, some image components. Image overall, again, you're above the benchmarks. High points, well-trained employees, communicates effectively, prepare students, provide life skills, all excellent scores, little bit lower on the well-managed, so you're at or above the benchmark there. Typically, that's one of the lower-scoring areas, and often this is an artifact of communication. Often, schools don't communicate how decisions are made as fully as they could, or they might say it once in a newsletter that comes out a couple times a year. So that's something to think about as you flesh out your strategic communication plan. Looking at the various experiences that people have, so these are people who actually have children in the schools. Curriculum is good, services, you can read those for yourself. High areas, teachers were rated very highly. Recent contact is rated very high. Communications is rated high, as well as the curriculum. And you can see that you are above the benchmark in most areas, with the exception of two, one being services and the other one being facilities, where you're a little bit below the benchmarks. This particular chart has a lot of data in it, and it's a little bit confusing at first, but it's important that you understand how it works, because this gives you a good 50,000-foot view of how the community responded. On the vertical is your ACSI score, on a scale of 0 to 100. So things in the top are your relative strengths, things that were rated highly. In the bottom are your relative weaknesses, things that were rated not as high. I like to point out that the bottom of this scale here is a 64. So even though these are in the bottom of the chart, these are still really good scores. I'm just giving you kind of the comparative performance of these different areas so that you can focus on improving going forward. The horizontal is based on the amount of impact that each of these areas have on overall satisfaction and those outcome behaviors. So things that are further off, to the side there, have a greater impact, there's more leverage to those areas. The things that are over here on this side have a lesser impact, a lesser amount of leverage. So up here in the upper right quadrant, these are areas that are high-performing areas that are also high-driving areas, areas that are driving your scores upward, they're exerting a positive effect on your scores. Things that are down in this bottom quadrant, which is fairly, fairly empty, but you've got a couple of bubbles that are heading over there, services and also safety and security. Those are things where your performance is a bit lower, and they're actually pulling down your score a little bit. So these are areas that are a little bit of a weight on the district. Areas here, pretty much optimized, so pretty high scores, not that much leverage left in them, so further improvement here won't necessarily move your overall scores, although there may still be important reasons for improving performance in these areas. Just know that from the perspective of driving overall satisfaction, they're pretty much optimized, not going to move the needle too much further. So what I'd like to do now is focus on some of the bubbles here that are on the right-hand side of the chart that have the most impact, so you can see the component questions underneath them. Curriculum, overall, again, you can see the score there. You can see that from a curriculum standpoint, you're above the benchmarks across the board. A couple of areas that are a bit stronger, level of challenge is strong, reading, science skill development, those are all very high scores. Areas where it's a little bit weaker, computer skills development, healthy physical education a little bit weaker, problem solving was a little bit weaker as well, and on the far side, foreign language and international skill development. So those are areas that, again, very solid scores, but they're a bit lower than some of your other scores as far as curriculum goes. So if you want to move your curriculum up a few notches, those are the areas to pay attention to that will lift your overall score, and in turn, can drive things more with your, with your overall satisfaction, those outcome behaviors. Okay. Teachers, again, above the benchmarks, couple of scores that are higher, I'd like to point out. Ease of contacting teachers, qualification of their subject is very high. Couple of areas that are a little bit lower, ability to motivate students, responsive to student needs, and responsive to parent concerns. Again, you're above the benchmarks in all those areas. They're all above 70, which is great, but again, teachers are one of those areas that have high leverage in moving the overall satisfaction needle, so those are some of the specific areas to pay attention to. Principals, again, solid scores. There were only three questions underneath principals, responsive to concerns, openness to improvement ideas, and innovation and problem solving. So the problem solving and the openness to improvement ideas were the scores that were a little bit lower than responsiveness, but again, not a lot of difference between those different areas. Services, this is an area where in most cases you were a bit below the benchmarks, particularly in food services, that was rated quite a bit lower, down in the 50s, preschool program, summer programs, and also the tutoring academic support was particularly low. So services will be something that you'll want to pay attention to, especially as property values and such begin to recover. We asked folks, open-ended question, what their most, what the most important improvements are, and the things that came up, teachers, that some are ineffective, and that identifying those teachers that are not being as effective is an important thing for you to do. Technology came up as an area to continue to pay attention to, and I think that's something that the board is very much aware of. And communication, again, communication is a very difficult thing, particularly in the public sector, and there are always opportunities for improving that. Reading this section will give you some specific ideas of how that communication can be improved. One of the questions that we asked, we gave them a long list of different things that the district could focus on. We asked them to pick the handful that they thought were the most important, the things that rose to the top, again, college ready, college preparation, the science, tech, engineering, and math, small class size, and to a lesser extent, workforce ready, and those kinds of vocational skills, skilled trades, that kind of training. Then you can see that it trails off to things that were not identified as much. One thing I like to point out with this chart is just because you had some areas that were selected, it doesn't mean people were against the areas on the far side of the chart. It just means that the things on that side were not selected as being priorities. They're not anti-robotics, it's just that when it came to making a choice between different areas, they thought that these areas were more important. One of the questions that we asked in the survey is for the respondent to consider all the schools that they've all the schools that they've ever been in contact with, whether it was a public school or a private school, and which practices, programs, or attribute really impressed them that Midland Schools should consider implementing. So when you're starting to do the blue-sky kind of planning, this is an interesting section to go through and get some ideas. There were just a lot of ideas of various programs that could be expanded or created, so a huge variety, and again, that's something to go through and, and see what kind of ideas you think would fit well. And also a lot of themes regarding active learning, so a lot of hands-on kind of things, a lot of online kind of experiential types of opportunities that they've seen that they think would be valuable to have more of here in the district. We then had a series of questions looking at potential millage and bond. So one of the pieces of that was looking at different potential components of a millage and a bond. So looking at the millage specifically, there are several pieces, and we asked folks, would you support this being included in the package? Would you oppose this being part of the package? Or are you not sure, you need more information? So you can see that maintenance and repairs, eighty percent say yes, that's clearly something that should be in the package. Pool expansion, you can see thirty-one percent said that should be part of the package. So the pool, much lesser level of support than the maintenance and repairs that, that really had almost no opposition, only five percent. Looking at the new tech and science labs, again, strong levels of support, so new tech had fifty-one percent of folks saying that they would support that, that that should be part of the package, about eighteen percent saying that they oppose. The science labs, music and art, seventy-six percent saying yes, that should be part of the package, only seven percent opposing. And this resonates well with some of the other sections of the survey that we looked at as far as what the focus area should be in some of the areas where you're not performing as well as people would like you to. So it, it does mesh together well. We also took a look at the continued investment in future focused technology tools. I believe this is the bond piece, yep, and fifty-three percent would support the bond, eighteen percent would oppose, about twenty-nine percent need more information. So in your cross tabs, you can see demographic group by demographic group, who are the groups specifically that are in favor of certain elements, who are the ones who are not in favor of it, who are the folks who need more information? And I encourage you to use this as a tool to engage those groups based on whatever decision you decide going forward to help you focus your message and have those kind of conversations. So the bottom line is if the election were held today, how do they think they would vote? So based on the package, and again, very gray because they don't know what else in the package, but overall, if people were, were pushed into the corner, they said that forty-six percent would support both the millage and the bond, only seven percent would oppose both the millage and the bond. About thirty percent are not sure, they need more information, and then you've got some, some different percentages of folks who support either the millage or the bond, but not both. So what this tells me is that your margin between people who are, are supportive and people who are not supportive, that's a pretty high margin. You've got a lot of undecided folks that you'd want to work on providing more education to, but it looks like the community overall is pretty comfortable with moving forward with some sort of package, and they've given you some feedback on what kind of things they think should be part of that package to move forward with. Best argument in support of the options, again, we talked about these early on, preparing students for the future, strong public schools are a good investment and it benefits all students, lesser support for the arguments of enhancing energy efficiency and help support the local economy, not that those are bad arguments, but when they were asked to prioritize which ones they thought were the strongest, those were the ones that they identified. We also asked them to think about arguments against, and what are those? And again, they don't want higher taxes, the economy is too weak, so that's where the opposition would be coming from, people who are concerned about those types of issues. We had an opportunity for them to provide general comments on the millage and bond thinking as you guys consider it. Top themes, students should be a priority, and by that, there were a lot of themes that were focused on class size, that were focused on experiential learning, those kind of things. And there is a little bit of concern through there that just putting technology on top of it doesn't, it needs to be a, a very thoroughly strategically considered process, that just giving them a laptop or giving them an iPad doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to have a positive learning experience. So it's balancing that. There's also some concern about being tied in with one particular platform, whether it's Apple or, or whatever, and that technology tends to update pretty quickly, so there were a number of those kinds of concerns in there as well. And then folks also said that the pool should be separate from the other elements in the bond and millage package if it's something that's going to go forward. We then had a section on communication preference. How do people want to receive information from the school district? Overwhelmingly, you can see that email was the one that was rated most highly, and I'd like to put a great big caution flag on this one because most of the respondents on this slide were folks who responded to the e-blast. So when they get the e-blast, of course, they're going to say, well, you sent me an email, of course, I like it. When we actually break down the demographics and you have that detail in your packet, for folks generally out in the community who received the mail survey, it was about even between mail and, and email. So again, just paying attention to which audience are you trying to reach and making sure you're using the appropriate combination of communication mechanisms to reach them, that's important. I'd like to point out that Facebook only has about seven percent of folks using that, and that's pretty consistent with our experience, most people aren't very interested in friending the school district or, or friending their local community leaders. Where do they go for local news? TV stations, internet being the two biggest, forty percent newspapers. We spent a little bit of time diving into that, which TV stations do they watch? Most of them watch CBS, so fifty-two percent, CBS would be happy to see this particular chart. Fox only had about sixteen percent. Which radio stations they listen to for local news? So most people don't, but if they do, ninety-six point one seems to be the, the leader of the pack, but not by that much. Ninety-four point five and seven ninety also have a pretty good share of that market. Looking at which print and online sources they use for local news, Midland Daily News, again, scored very well, so they would be happy to see this. Armidland.com, MLive, Saginaw News, and Bay City Times trailing that out. Which social media sites they use for local news? You can see none of these, followed by Facebook. So a lot of people do use Facebook, but again, they're not necessarily wanting to use Facebook as a tool to interact with the district. We asked them a little bit about what kinds of topics they would like to receive more information on, and again, you've got the text cloud, so you can go through the detail. A lot more on how to meet the needs of individual students, so parents, just giving parents more tools, helping kids with homework, different strategies that they can use in the home to further their children's education on that side, concern regarding bullying, and then more information on the teachers, and, and again, you can go through the detail of that and see it. Implementing results, one of the important things to think about when you're looking at these from an improvement perspective, and picking which scores you want to improve, is asking yourself, is that score low because we have a perception problem, that people think it's this way when it's really something different? Or do you have an actual performance issue where you're not performing at the level that you know you need to be at? And it's important because you resolve those kind of gaps in two different ways. If you have a perception gap, that's much more of an education and outreach kind of fix. So taking the right data, spending a lot of time, making sure that the community is educated, communicating repeatedly and then repeatedly and then repeatedly. One of the things that we found with communication, especially from any governmental entity, is that you can't beat the horse enough. You really need to beat the horse until it's glue, just make sure your message gets out there over and over again, multiple channels, multiple times. So that's the perception gap. If it's an actual performance gap, then that's much more of a resource and process kind of fix that you need to put in place. And once you've gotten that kind of fix in place and you know that you've gotten the performance up to the level that you want it to be at, but you still have a performance gap because people will tell you things that you did wrong twenty years ago, that's ancient history. Need to make sure that people do know that you've resolved the issue and that you are performing at the higher level now, and again, communicate that over and over again. Putting the data into practice, one of the things that we try to do is just give you a tool, high-level thing that you can use to guide through the process. You've done step one, which is measurement. Step two is really a brainstorming process where you pull together a small group and you say, what are the things on the survey that we really want to improve going forward? Take a flip chart, on one flip chart, you're going to say, for each of those things that we want to improve, why did people respond the way that they did? List out all those things that you can. Second flip chart, what are some things that we can do to improve the scores going forward? Again, brainstorming, get as many things on paper as you can. Then you go to step three, which is the validation and confirming. That's when you start having your improvement committee come in, you start having parents, different work groups, community groups, share the list with them and say, here's what we came up with, what's missing from the list of things that we can do better? Add onto the list, then once you have that full list, then you ask them, what are the two or three things that really make the most sense? And you identify those two or three things to act on. Step four, training, making sure folks have the skills and the tools that they need to actually implement those kind of changes. Step five is actual implementation, this is project management, what are your milestones? What are your deliverables? How is progress going to be measured on a monthly or quarterly basis so that the visibility of the project is maintained and momentum is maintained? Then at some point, measuring again to see if you have made an impact on those scores, and also to see if the priorities have shifted as the broader economic and social environment So again, you want to think about the characteristics of an ideal district through the community's eyes. What does the community see in Midland Public Schools? The reality is that they, they see a lot. Your community values you, a lot of people took time to share their ideas and their thoughts with you in the survey, and the community wants you to succeed. People are proud of their hometown, they're proud of their homeschool, and they want to see that continue to get stronger. So with that, questions?
Questions, Bill.
Wow.
We had a lot of discussion of FFOs, defer to the other ones for now.
No questions?
It's a lot to digest.
I'll, I'll get the ball rolling. There was one that I caught during this, when you were in the slide about best practices and, and programs to consider, you mentioned, I think the number one comment was on expanded programs.
Yes.
Was there a common theme about, I mean, you said there were many things thrown out.
Yeah.
Is there a commonality to any of those?
I, I guess more dealing with the experiential learning, the hands-on kind of stuff.
Okay.
So some of those types of things. But again, it was all over the board in terms of different things.
So it wasn't a common theme necessarily?
And, and I would just pay attention to what the quantitative side said as well. So, you know, overall, certain focuses that you should have, look at the comments with that lens on. The, the comments are useful in helping you interpret the quantitative, it shouldn't trump the quantitative.
William, I have just one question related to communication because we know we need to do more with communication, and, and this board has supported a position where we're going to buy some communication services from another private entity here in town. And I'm going to have an opportunity actually to sit down with this person on Wednesday morning, and then they're going to come in and work with small groups here in the district. But when you talk about it, and then you showed that matrix that had the four quadrants on it, and communication was up and it was between that median line.
Yes.
And I think I heard you say that you, we're leveraging that pretty good already. Help me understand, it seems like there's conflicting information about communication coming through the survey.
Sure. That particular chart was in the middle, so it's, it's not that, it didn't have the strongest amount of leverage, direct, direct leverage on the scores as some of the other areas, but communication is important for moving indirectly all of those other scores and how they're perceived. So it's, it's very important from a gap closing perspective to have that kind of role, making sure that the messages are aligned with the kind of topics that the community is interested in so that they're getting the information. The, the communication bubble itself was dealing more with newsletters, website, that kind of thing, which is more of a direct communication, but what you're talking about is much more of a strategic impact that a communication person can have kind of across the board, and, and that can really lift all of your scores. The, the cautionary note is to make sure that they're focused on those areas that are going to move you the most and they don't get caught up in topics that aren't as impactful.
Very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to mention, I guess for the rest of the board members, Jerry, John, and I had an opportunity in FFO to spend a lot of time with him, and actually we went in detail into all the cross-tableations, which is the handout in front of you, which obviously we don't have time for now, but take, take a few minutes to kind of dive into those. It's really interesting stuff, there's a lot of information, so all the answers to the questions he shared broken down by child's grade or child schooled or, or age and those kind of things. I don't think there was a lot of major changes occurring in the demographic, but there's still really some interesting perspectives that I think would be well worth your while in your leisure time to kind of take a look at, because it's an unbelievable amount of data that's embedded in the summary that he gave, so.
Within that particular sheet, a couple of lines that I'd just like to point out, right up at the top, the difference between the e-blast score and the sample score, that's the difference between the email that was sent out to parents, so that's, e-blast is much more of a parent kind of score, and the sample is much more of the representative survey that, that went out to the entire community, to all registered voter, well, to a sample of registered voters. So that's the difference between those two scores. So I would rely on the sample score much more when you're thinking about the, the election kind of things, and if you're looking at school improvement, both the sample and the e-blast scores are important to keep in mind.
Thank you. John? Just a comment on that slide that had listed our greatest attributes for the district or the greatest themes. The one thing in common on that scattergram that showed the far upper right involved our people in the district, and it just, really proud, principals, teachers, and the third item on there was quality programming and staff, just our people, I think tend to shine in these types of things, so credit is deserved where it's, where it's due.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm impressed, I'm proud.
To, to underscore that, too, those kinds of scores don't just happen. We, we work with a lot of different groups and very high scores, I mean, the bottom of the score was a sixty-four, we've worked with groups where that was the top. So a lot of good work, a lot of thoughtful, dedicated staff here working to make it happen as well as dedicated members of the community. So, good stuff.
The small percent that was focused on social media?
Yes.
Going back to communication?
Yes.
Are there AC, AFCI scores that benchmark that compared? I mean, I think a lot of us, myself included, was under the impression we need to do more with social media because younger parents with technology, that's the way they communicate. You look at what cities are doing, our city has a very strong presence in terms of its social media and other entities around us. That seven percent caught me off guard, I thought, I thought the desire might be higher than that.
It's an emerging communication mode, so it's not one that's fully matured at this point, so certainly thinking about it strategically is important. Using it as your primary communication mechanism would be a mistake at this point, but certainly starting to get used to it, understanding it, not having huge expectations that everybody's going to sign up and friend you, it's important to keep your expectations controlled and that you do deal with other communication modes as well, because it's important to have that balance of multiple modes as you're trying to reach folks. The other thing is that social media is more than just Facebook, so there's a lot of very useful tools, YouTube, those kind of things that can be used as actual, an educational channel, especially for parents who are trying to get information on how to help their kids study or, or those types of things, that could be a very useful mechanism for getting some of that kind of education out of the community. And then you can track how many hits and people can comment and all of that.
Jerry, I won't make it a statement, I'll make it a question, but looking from a statement from you, when, when we, when questioned about, would you be willing to pass a millage or pay for a bond? Can you describe what context that was put into? So wasn't just a, just a open statement, that was more of a closed question?
It, it was not, and I believe you have a copy of the survey itself, it's on page five, but on the millage option, there's a few paragraphs that go into it, providing a little bit of explanation of what a sinking fund is in the first place. And then essentially we say, please review the pieces of the sinking fund millage before, note the pieces that you would support, oppose, or if you need more information. And so when we were going through, and eighty percent support the maintenance piece, it's not necessarily saying that they'll vote for the millage, eighty percent of them will vote for the millage, they just say that, that is something that if you're going to do the millage, that should be a part of it. Does that help?
Yes, was it, were they given any idea of order of magnitude we might ask for?
They were, there was an estimated cost measured in mils and also in dollars per month for a home with a market value of a hundred thousand dollars.
So they're given a specific price tag?
Ballpark, I mean, obviously the details will swing that a little bit.
Yeah, and it's worth noting, I think, too, Jerry, because I think it was thirty-one percent if I remember for the pool. That's going to surprise some people now that we're talking about it publicly in this meeting, and the statement that we had in the survey actually came, it's a direct quote out of a community study group sponsored by the Community Center on community recreational use of pools, because we know that we needed some background for choosing the words and stating that the way that we did, and I think people will misinterpret that when they see that lower percentage, and I just want to understand where that came from. We didn't dream up that language on our own, that came from a larger community group that looked just at the recreational needs, I think that's a fair way to put it. Mrs. Klein serves on that committee. There may be other competitive needs that people look at when they think of the pool, but that's not what that community group was studying at that point in time.
Yeah, and the main, my main point was to, so that we all understood, and the public listening tonight understood, that when asked if you're willing to pay for something, it's not without context of how big the price tag or small the price tag is, that it was done relative to what I'm going to have to pay, not just this theoretical, are you willing? Which is hugely critical for folks to understand. Which is hugely critical for folks to understand.
One piece that you may want to consider as you think about this, too, are other sections of the survey. So early on, page one, we asked them three most important factors in choosing which school system you have your children attend, and they had a number of different things they could choose from. And most of those were related around academics and curriculum and so on. Athletics was not the thing that was driving that decision.
Way down.
And so seeing other sections and keeping that higher focus, certainly athletics are an important piece of the school experience, but as you're trying to make hard choices about where to put resources, you need to think about the prioritization of it.
Rick?
William, we're still talking about the millage and bond thing. We're going to be talking about this later in our agenda after you're gone, presumably. Based on those numbers there, would you support one or the other or both? And what the numbers were, they were both less than 50%, but high 40s if I recall, with a substantial number of people that were just unsure. What's your experience based on the surveys you've done? I realize it's not the majority, but would you say that's kind of a positive indication of likely support with appropriate kind of education awareness, if you will, over time? Can you give me a perspective on that?
Certainly the credibility of the thing, how you approach it and share the information with the public is going to be a very important piece of it. So people do feel like you're being straight shooters and that they do understand what the package is. So if you try to sneak it in, you're probably going to get zapped at the pools. Having said that, another piece is what else is going to be on the ballot if there are other millages and that kind of thing? That can adjust the score. But by itself, you're not trying to get to a majority, you just want the yeas to outnumber the nays, and right now you've got a huge margin. So you're starting from a pretty strong place. And if you do act with integrity and you do a good job educating the public and barring some confounding thing that hops out?
Sure.
You should be in pretty good shape as long as it's thoughtfully put together and shared with the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it lends itself to the history of this district and on these types of issues. The most recent sinking fund was communicated to the public in that very manner so that they understood it completely as we move forward on that. And that was before my time, but I'm sure Rick remembers it.
If you will.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, William.
It's my pleasure.
I appreciate your being willing to be here tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for the time that you all put in.
Safe drive back to Lansing.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.2, and for those students that are here this evening, unfortunately, you chose a night with a rather lengthy agenda. So if at any point during this meeting you choose to leave, we understand because there probably might be some other homework besides government that you are here to, or may have it on your plate. So we understand if you, but you're certainly welcome to stay. With the next agenda item, 4.2, policy change for serving food in elementary and secondary buildings, Mrs. Klein.
Ken, can I just add one point? Because I think for a lot of the students, they feel handcuffed here until they get a signature. Am I right? Often you have to get a signature to prove that you are here. We have two B, they've been elected to the board members in the back. Why don't you raise your hand, Scott and Kim? And I would think if you felt you had to leave and you needed to get a signature, if one of those two individuals would sign, don't tell your teacher I said that, but that would probably get you an early ticket out of here, so. You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Klein.
Yes, good evening. We have for information this evening, and it will be available for public comment for the next few weeks, a revision to the current competing foods policy that's contained in how Midland schools work. Federal law requires that we have a policy, and we're not certain when our existing policy was adopted, but it reads, "Food sold as a part of a lunch program is permissible both in elementary and secondary schools. In the elementary and secondary schools operating a cafeteria program or its equivalent, the only food that can be sold to the students at lunchtime is food which is also sold to the student as a part of the lunch program." We've had students and buildings question the restrictive language of that policy. So I did a little bit of research in both the current and the proposed law, and what we're bringing you this evening, we believe will meet the guidelines in the law as it currently stands. We are not certain where the new Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 is going to land. We thought we would know what the language would be regarding competitive foods by this spring because according to the government guidelines, proposed rules were supposed to be available this spring for implementation in the summer of 2013. They have not yet been introduced. So it's very likely that within the next year or so, we might need to bring a future revision to this, but without knowing where it is, we really need to make a revision today. I will say that when the new guidelines are somehow put into rule form, they could be very far sweeping because the law requires that the U.S. Department of Agriculture establish national nutrition standards for all food sold and served in schools at any time during the school day. Our current policy just applies to food sold during the breakfast and the lunch period. So could be very far sweeping changes, but we're going to address what we know now and we think it'll give a little bit more latitude to our buildings. So the proposed revision, which will be available for public comment for the next few weeks, says, "Food sold as a part of a breakfast or lunch program is permissible both in elementary and secondary schools. In the elementary and secondary schools operating a cafeteria program or its equivalent, the only food that can be sold to the students in the cafeteria or its vicinity at breakfast or lunchtime is food which is also sold to the student as a part of the breakfast or lunch program. Competitive foods may be sold elsewhere in the building only if all income from the sale of such foods accrues to the benefit of the nonprofit school food service or the school or student organizations approved by the school. Food of minimal nutritional value as defined by the United States Department of Agriculture may not be sold during breakfast or lunch periods anywhere in the building." So that, those are our proposed changes. It frees it up a little bit to allow competitive foods elsewhere in the building. Also makes it clear that the competitive food policy applies to the breakfast program, which probably wasn't in existence at the time that we adopted the previous policy.
Questions of Linda?
We had a pretty good discussion on this at the administrative subcommittee that I chair, and for good reason, we've made these recommendations with respect to changes. And so while I will not be here for your final vote on this issue after the 28 days, you know, if you have questions of Linda or Carl, it was a good meeting and had a lot of good reasoning behind it as far as why the changes were made.
Okay. Moving on to 4.3, policy change for Great Lakes Bay early college students, Mr. Ellinger.
Well, at the same meeting, we also talked about our policy for participation of students in graduation ceremonies. And this is in chapter eight of the Student Services section. Their current policy reads, "A student may participate in the high school graduation ceremony only when he or she has completed all requirements for the awarding of the high school diploma or a certificate of attendance." And then down in the bottom paragraph, as you saw in your packet, it talks about how there is a distinction for a student who is a special needs student, a special education. We are, again, for public comment tonight, presenting to the board for the first time what we call the Great Lakes Bay Early College Participant Addition to this policy. And at the recommendation of the Administrative Services Committee, it would read as follows. "Midland Public Schools will allow participation in graduation ceremonies for our MPS students, but only after and if the Great Lakes Bay Early College Program at their initiative has informed MPS that our students in their program have met the final requirements for high school graduation. The responsibility therefore lies with the Great Lakes Bay Early College Program and parents to ensure MPS has received proper notification of such. This will not be a Midland Public Schools responsibility." That puts a lot of responsibility on parents and the early college program, and that's by design. This year, that program is called something, it's called PEPY, and it has to do with how we track the students. Once we have a student here, let's say they spend their freshman and sophomore year here and they enter that program, they can actually spend the next three years in that program and take five years to earn their high school diploma. If they do, it's very likely that for a number of those students, not all, but for a lot of them, they can actually complete their high school requirements at the end of their fourth year, but they would not earn a high school diploma until they complete the fifth year of the program. This will allow those students to come back and really graduate. We had a parent raise this issue a couple of meetings back, I think the first meeting in November, and she and I have communicated, they're happy with this. It allows those youngsters to participate in graduation, perhaps with kids that they'd gone all the way through school with, from kindergarten through 10th grade, until they exited for the early college program. We had a pretty interesting discussion in the study committee in that when you look at graduation from that point of view, it's a social occasion with all the activities, relatives coming into town, participating in graduation. They wouldn't receive a diploma, but they're allowed to participate with their cohort that's graduating within four years back here at Midland High or at Dow High.
Good solution. And that's for information also, so.
Yes, sir.
That's something, again, will be decided at the next board meeting. 4.4, with respect to millage renewal dates, Mrs. Klein.
The screen's coming down. I'll just state that this is a bit of a follow-up to what we talked about at the last meeting. I gave you a fairly extensive chart a couple of weeks ago that showed our current millages as well as those that are levied by the ESA and gave you a 10-year history. Tonight, we're going to take a step back and I'll give you a bigger picture view, but also talk about when we need to consider these millages for renewal. And I think this will be important information as you go ahead and process some of the information that came from the COBALT study. So we have four millages that we'll be discussing this evening. Two are our current millages. One is actually levied by the Midland County Educational Service Agency, and one is our sinking fund that has expired. But these are, as a government, these are the millages that you currently levy, and it's probably among one of the more important things that you do. I know I generally refer to the various tax resolutions as housekeeping, but it's housekeeping that keeps the house open and in order. So pretty important to understand how these function. Our first millage is our basic operating millage, and this is the language that people would see on their tax bills. The properties that actually have to pay this millage are called the non-PRE and the commercial personal property. Now, the non-PRE, you may wonder, what is non-PRE? And what's the opposite of that? What is PRE? Well, PRE stands for principal residence exemption. Used to be called the homestead properties. And a principal residence exemption exempts a residence from the tax levied here for school operating purposes up to 18 mils. That's important phraseology for Midland Public Schools and other hold harmless districts because our local households or our PREs are not exempt for the full 18 mils. They're exempt for all but a small portion of it. And the General Property Tax Act of the State of Michigan says that in order to qualify for a PRE, a person must be a Michigan resident who owns and occupies the property as a principal residence. So non-PRE is real property as opposed to personal property, and it is not owned by an individual for their personal residence. So non-PRE, we might refer to as the industrial properties. If someone owns rental property, that would be non-PRE. But industrial has a further breakdown into industrial real and industrial personal. And a few years ago, there were some changes that industrial personal is now exempt from this. So these are the non-PRE real properties and commercial personal properties. The purpose of this millage is to support our general operations. This money goes to the general fund. And the non-PRE properties pay 18 mils, the commercial personal properties pay six mils. We levy the same amount that was approved. That's not the case for all of our millages. In our current school year, we are expecting just a little under $16 million of support in our general fund from the general operating millage. We last voted on it in 2005, so it will expire in May of 2015. The last time it will appear on anyone's tax bills will be the bill that they receive in December of 2014, which is due in February of 2015. So in order to have it on the summer tax bills that are prepared to go out in July 1, we would have to have this approved no later than May 2015 because we have to notify the city and the townships that we want to levy for that July bill before the end of May. And feel free to jump in with questions because we're going to go through each one sequentially. The next is our supplemental millage. We also call this our hold harmless. Now, the properties subject to this millage are the principal residences that are exempt from all 18 mils with the exception of this amount. Commercial personal property pays this on top of their six mils, and it's considered part of the 18 mils paid by the non-PREs. Interestingly, we had a gentleman stop by the office today. He lives in Homer Township, and he was asking about the two millages because he had an amount that showed, I'm guessing it must have been roughly 16.1 mils of exempt operating, and then it had supplemental. And he said, "Well, isn't your regular exempt operating 18 mils?" I said, "Well, if you add the two together, they're 18 mils, but you are exempt from all but 16.1, the amount that you subtract what the current levy is." This is also general operations. We call it our hold harmless millage because when it was enacted back at the time of passage of Proposition A, it was to allow us to be held harmless for having a basic, a foundation that was higher than the state basic. That's where the term hold harmless comes from. At that time, it was approved at 5.6523 mils. However, it may only be levied at the amount that's required to raise $415.31 per pupil because that's the amount by which we exceeded the basic foundation back in 1994. So as property values have increased over the years, the amount that we're permitted to levy drops quite a bit. And you can see we're well below the halfway point right now. However, it does generate a sizable amount of money for our budget. In the current year, we're expecting just under $3.2 million. Now, we have both of these millages travel together as ballot issues. They're separate ballot issues, but we've timed them together. And so it, too, was last passed in May 2005, which means it expires in May 2015. Again, the last time it will appear on tax bills will be December 2014, payable mid-February 2015. Will need to be renewed no later than May 2015.
Linda, that could be renewed earlier. Is that correct?
Then we have the enhancement millage. And for this one, all properties are subject. There is no exemption for personal, et cetera, not currently. As you know, that's one of the topics in the lame duck session of the legislature right now, whether to exempt some or all personal properties from some of these millages, and that would definitely affect the enhancement millage. All properties are subject to that. The purpose, again, is for general operations, but in our ESA, when we went to the voters, the local districts agreed to earmark the proceeds for protecting class size, technology, career technical education, buses, and textbooks and curriculum support. The mils that are approved for that, it's 1.5, we levy, or we, the ESA levies, 1.5 mils. And our current budget has about $3.3 million in it from the enhancement millage. And this is levied across all of the properties in the intermediate school district, and it's distributed on an equal-per-pupil basis, and that's by statute. This one was voted on in May 2009 for a five-year period, so it will expire in May 2014. The last time it appears on tax bills will be December 2013, payable by the spring of '14, and it will need to be renewed by May of 2014 if it's going to be collected in that summer. Then we have had, up until this year, our sinking fund. And again, all properties are subject to the sinking fund under the law as it currently stands. And the purpose of sinking fund is to provide for repairs and capital improvements. It can also be used for new construction. It may not be used for general operations, and just the nature of its name should give you an indication, this is not money that may go into the general fund. It has to be a It has to be a standalone fund. Our voters approved two mills, which we levied for the first few years, 2002, '03, all the way out to 2008, '09. And then, when the ESA passed the enhancement millage, you voted to reduce it to maintain the tax burden for our taxpayers at the same level. And so, for the last few years, we levied it at half of a mill, '09, '10, all the way to '11, '12. It has now expired, so we have no money in the current budget. It expired in June of this year, but the last billing that it appeared on was December 2011. So, had we wanted to do a straightforward renewal, we would have had to have renewed before June of this year. And over 10 years, I gave you a breakdown year by year. You can see that the sinking fund has raised a little over $43 million over 10 years. And I know that sounds like a whale of a lot of money, but to put it in perspective, you go back to our last board meeting where I brought you the insurance renewal, you'll see that the value of all of the district properties is established at over $200 million. And on average, what we've spent on the sinking fund is less than 2% of the value of our properties per year. So, we have a lot of property and repairs and maintenance will continue to be a large figure as we move forward with preventive maintenance. So, those are the millages that we have today and their expirations. You can see they're beginning to stack up. We have, in all likelihood, an enhancement millage election sometime end of '13, beginning of '14. And then, in '14 or '15, we need to renew our two operating millages. And combined, those are in excess of $20 million for the district, roughly a quarter of all revenues.
Thank you, Linda. Questions?
And Linda, just for clarity to those listening in, correct me if I'm wrong, but the state decides how much money we're going to get every year based on our student count and what they want to pay in a foundation allowance. And this just buttresses, not in addition to that, it's inclusive of that total dollars number. And so, if we were to not go for these, or if we were to, or the voters were, would chose, other than the sinking fund, chose not to renew the operating millages, we would suffer that consequence out of our income.
Correct. The enhancement millage is additional money. That's really the only place where local voters, in addition to sinking fund, have the opportunity to vote additional money. The other is the state assumes when they establish the amount that we're receiving for our foundation, they assume that we're levying our supplemental and our operating millage, and then they make up whatever the balance is. If we don't have those, we're.
They don't make up the difference.
Out of luck.
Linda, have you ever heard of a school district trying to operate without its operating millage?
Well, we're unusual. I've seen districts that have lost their operating millage elections more than once. But what makes Midland unusual is that such a large portion of our foundation is made up from our operational money. I'm not aware of any district that has the proportion of basic operations coming from the local millage losing. I think I have heard of some where they don't have the tax base we do because it's non-PRE, it's not the homesteads, and so it represents a much smaller portion of their budget.
I am only aware of some who have lost their operating millage request the first time, and then they sit down with their board and they immediately plot out a strategy to go back for them. Because for most districts, districts, it means bankrupt.
Yeah. It's just, I mean, it's foolish. It's the bedrock on which the entire pupil foundation is based, local operating millage and state. And if you don't have the local, the state's not interested in making it up.
Pre-Proposal A, virtually everything was dependent upon an operating millage.
Correct.
I think the closest one to us in recent years has been Gladwin.
Yes.
That had a failed operating millage. And I think it's important for this board and for the new board members to realize that as you move forward with, and I think this will probably be a point that will be brought up time and time again, was as you move forward towards these renewals, you're going to have to be balanced in looking at the sinking, potentially a sinking fund or bond issue, and when that might happen and how that might impact that, and make sure that people understand the difference, the difference between an operating millage and the necessity of having that and also the, what the potential sinking fund or a bond issue could do for the district as, and moving forward.
And the point is never take any of those for granted whatsoever.
Exactly.
Never take them for granted, no matter what our history has been in this district, which is a very supportive community, but never take those for granted.
Exactly. Questions or other comments? Thank you, Linda. Very well presented. Moving on for recommended action, the first one being administrative authorization for sinking fund millage, technology bond exploration. Mr. Ellinger and Mrs. Klein.
Yeah, we've actually received a clarification from our attorney as we look at planning for a potential election of some sort in May. The board really does not need to take action tonight on specific millages for either a sinking fund or a technology bond. What we need is approval to move forward in an exploration of a potential sinking fund millage and/or a technology bond election for May of 2013. If approved, the Board of Education action will allow us, the district, to meet with the Michigan Department of Treasury for preliminary qualification prior to calling for an official election. And we will have to make a decision if we go down this path, what those millages would look like. But I think we need to give you some time to process the data you got tonight, follow up again with the Finance Facilities and Operations Committee in January. Let us have our meeting, if you approve this, with the Department of Treasury. And then, fairly quick order, within a month or so, we should make some decisions on how to move forward because if your desire is to have an election, we'll have to plan campaign strategy and communication out to the public about what that means.
Board's pleasure.
I would like to move that we approve the moving forward in exploration of both a potential sinking fund and/or technology bond election.
And I would second that motion.
Move by Mr. Oly, supported by Mr. Wassman. Questions or further discussion?
I just want to say from the Cobalt survey data, I feel comfortable supporting this. I think the details have to be worked out, but I'm just, I'm glad to have that information. Thanks, Carl, administration, for getting it done. I feel like I have the information I need to support this.
We spent extensive time in FFO looking into the details of this, looking at the sequencing of this, looking at potential millage rates, which again is premature for tonight, looking at the timing of this versus all the millages that Linda and Carl have talked about. I think we kind of generally agreed pretty strongly that now is the time to move forward. It's a matter of how much and that kind of thing, and that's for future meetings to discuss. But I think the time is now and it'll be ambitious for me, for both of them, but given everything that's ahead of future boards, I should say, minus Ken and I, we think it's probably paramount that we kind of move forward now with the thought that perhaps we do this in May. That would be my sense. Jerry, John, I guess please add in from our discussion.
Absolutely concur, Rick, and anybody who knows me or has seen me on this board in the past, to do not take the taxpayers lightly as we go forward on this. It was very important to me and the board was great when we did the sinking fund versus the enhancement millage and kept our taxpayers neutral in Midland Public Schools by basically shifting money into buildings and to money into operations and kids. So, when I look forward to this, I don't take that at all lightly, and I do know that the district has got to make some investments in technologies as we go forward. It's going to be a big hole for our kids going forward if we don't, both in delivery and understanding of instruction. And the sinking fund, while likely not needed to be as big as it has in the past because we have invested over the last 10 years, will be needed to refresh our facilities and not dip into our operating budget for expenses for buildings. Because every time we have to dip into the operating budget for expenses for buildings, that's a teacher we can't pay, that's a teacher can't be in the classroom when we do that. So, it's very important to me that we do that, but I don't take it lightly and I'm fully supportive and I look forward to moving on.
I'll just finish by saying, as a future citizen-at-large, after tonight or after the end of December, with no children in the district anymore, I think it's, I mean, this is critical to this community as a whole and how we deliver our, that educational experience to our students that have that expectation and certainly should have that expectation as they enter our district. And so, I would have no problem as a taxpayer with, at-large, former board member, supporting anything like this, and I would go on record publicly acknowledging that. So, it's critical. I think your timing is perfect and it's a good recommendation from FFO. You've done your due diligence and Carl and Linda and all those who were, have been involved with it from the agenda group have done a real good job in presenting this and how that might look as we move forward. Okay, so we have a motion and support on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. You have your exploration. Thank you. Moving to the next agenda, item 4.6, the Neola Policy, 1422 on nondiscrimination. Mr. Ellinger.
Yes, for a second read, for a second reading, so it's really an adoption tonight. You have a policy in front of you. For nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities, something that we have to do. You see the legal citations down below. Keeps you in good stead with your employment practices as a school district, so we're hoping that you'll approve this policy this evening.
So, move?
Second.
Move by Mr. Oly, supported by Mrs. Brant. Any question, the discussion of Mr. Ellinger with respect to the changes in his policy? Motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. You have your changes, Mr. Ellinger. And again to you, Mr. Ellinger, with respect to Neola Policy 0150, organizations in light of legislation moving regular public school elections.
This is a policy that we also have in front of you for the second time for adoption. This really just takes you, remember, we're in the process of converting the old How Midland Public Schools Policy Manual to the new Neola Policies. This captures the practices for when we hold organizational meeting, what has to be done at that organizational meeting, from designating your signatories for deposits in banks and different law firms that we would use, as well as the election of officers and the participation that all of you have as individual board members on your study committees. There's really no big change from what your policy is. It just puts it in the format of the Neola Policy. And unless there were objections, I would recommend this to you for adoption this evening.
Thank you. Questions?
So, move?
Support. Move by Mr. Oly, supported by Dr. Kaminski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. You have your new organizational policy. Communications by Design, Mr. Verlendi.
Yes, now that you approved exploration of a technology bond, we'd like some help.
Sorry, we're out of votes.
Basically, we have, we are recommending that we sign a contract with Communications by Design out of Ada, Michigan, in helping us do all the preparation for what could be a technology bond. That's ultimately your decision. And then, should that bond go to the voters and should it be approved, to help with all the design, implementation, project management over the course of the entire project. You need to understand that at this time and through any successful passage of a bond, we are not on the hook for any monies, okay? Part of the help that we would get from this company is also doing that communicating that we talked about earlier that we need to about the project and putting together the figures and presenting those to Treasury in January and then working with our financial advisor here for the district and our attorneys in going to that meeting sometime in January with Treasury and then from then on, going through the entire project management. But we, we are not incurring any cost unless, number one, you decide to go for a bond, technology bond, and secondly, it's successful passage. And then, from then on, as we move into implementation, there are design, project management costs, et cetera, very similar to the type of arrangement we have with Walgas going forward with our sinking fund. So, we'd like approval to be able to sign that contract and work with them. Right now, we'd like to be looking at, okay, what are the exact costs? How might that be amortized over a period of time? What would be the ideal length of that bond to get maximum return and to make a technology project, not just having technology in a classroom, but a sustainable plan over a period of years? Because as you well know, sometimes technology changes and we want to make sure that our kids not only have the tools, but that they have the appropriate tools and not be in a situation where the tools don't work at some point.
Questions, Mr. Verlendi.
Question, Gary. One of the things that was brought up in the Cobalt survey is the concern about the change in platform, if it goes between iPad, the new Microsoft Surface and so forth. Being that technology changes really fast, if we go over a period of two, three, four years and we realize there's a version, you know, 3.5 or a different platform, they would guide us through that flexibility?
Yes, what you need to understand is that when we go to Treasury, we may, we will talk about devices and devices for students and devices for teachers, but we do not have to specify at this time which exact device it will need to be because there could be a device in two years or three years that isn't even on the drawing board yet. So, you really, you spec out the cost based on cost of types of devices and then you go through Treasury and try to get preapproval for a bond millage. But then, once you get into implementation, those choices, those things can change along the way. For example, if we're looking at laptops, well, tablets are becoming more like laptops. They may become laptops. And especially if you're going five, six years out, you want to have that flexibility, but it does give us that flexibility.
Gary, I would just add that I agree, John, and what it does is by having a technology consultant on board, I mean, they see the technology landscape in other school districts. And this is a company, correct me if I'm wrong, that's worked with Rockford Schools. They've worked with Mount Pleasant on two different occasions, big technology project in Holland. So, you're talking at some pretty, I think they've worked with, was it East Kentwood or Forest Hills?
It's East Kentwood.
East Kentwood. So, they've worked with some districts similar to us and they can see what their trending purchases are relative to technology. That's just something that we don't have time to do, so I think there's some real advantages in using a consultant that can see what's going on in other districts. Yeah.
And Carl, it's not just the time, it's the expertise.
Yeah, of course.
If they do that for a living, that's what they do. They'll be better at it than we could be.
I'm going to move approval of the contract with Communications by Design.
Support. Move by Mr. Oly, supported by Dr. Kaminski. Any further discussion or questions? If not, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. You have your technology. See how easy that was? Okay, the next part isn't quite so easy. And that's not, that's no reflection.
Want me to leave?
Not at all, not at all. It's kind of a bittersweet thing for me. And this whole evening, what remains of it is probably in that same category. So, most of you have a copy of this in front of you, so if you care to read along as I read Carl's performance review for the 2012 school year. And so, here we go and see how it, how it works out for everybody. Carl, this year, like previous, previous year, is with gratitude and thanks that I have the opportunity to present your performance review from the Board of Education for the year 2012. My format has not changed and you will not, you will hear excerpts from all seven board members built into this document. Carl, the most important single issue any board can have with a superintendent is defined by the word trust. Based on the evaluations, this statement captures it best. Integrity, respect, care, concern, trust are very important to Carl, and he displays this, displays these characteristics in all areas with all people. A Board of Education member stated, Carl does an excellent job in keeping us informed, informed of the issues in the district through emails and open, and phone calls. And yet another states, I appreciate that Carl led us through the necessary yet difficult contract negotiations, but at all times was upfront with us, with, with all involved, even in the face of many challenges from many directions. During this timeframe, on a topic of routine governance, much like the past, Carl, you are not afraid to look into the future of how Midland Public Schools might look and how we use that talents from within, within to build a strong team of future leaders. It is very obvious to all that sit at this table that this is included in how we move this great district forward. One observation sums it up best, is beginning to create success, a succession plan for major administrators, very large advocate for teachers. major administrators, very large advocate for teachers' personal development. In these challenging times of school finance, we welcome your creativity and persistence. An example of this is a successful implementation of the middle school sports program with the Midland Community Center. This came with a significant, significant cost savings to the district, while yet another created an opportunity for middle and high students and staff, and an experience never offered in our district in the past. This came after successfully receiving a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Gersstaker Foundation to partner with high schools in Taiwan. Carl, getting back to basics of school finance, one board member captured it this way. Great grasp of cost, revenues, and spending priorities of the board and the community. Carl, your relationship with the community continues to grow. The countless boards, committees you serve on are seemingly endless, and you become the face of middle and public schools. Through this process, you become integrated with the foundations, both corporate and private, along with countless civic organizations you have spoken to or have become a part of. You have an outstanding relationship with the leaders of these foundations, corporate leaders, and meet with them regularly and frequently. They understand our priorities and are supportive of our, of our direction as a result of your leadership. One board member summed it up by saying, just looking at the list of accomplishments, initiatives Carl has had led, implemented, implemented, supported, shows a tireless champion. He is, he is for all aspects of education. When it comes to, when it comes to what is best for students and how actions in Lansing impact students in the classroom, you're the first to respond and give direction to the board on how it might impact our students. In doing so, you are not quick to point fingers, but offer a critical critique of the best information available. Your close relationship with our legislature, giving this governing body a voice to advocate what is best for our district, and has built a strong positive relationship. In the area of leadership, the board continues to benefit from your gathering of, gathering of the community to set the mission which provides, which guides us yet today. A prime example is the current process and endeavor toward creating and funding a new tech program. A systematic approach to how this best fits that mission and how we will have, how we will have created yet another great potential opportunity for our students. Clearly, one of the most beneficial pieces, how we move this, move into the future, came from your drive to create a technology strategy, including the recommendation to bring our new technology director, bring our new technology director. The result, that result benefits of this have provided instant returns on the district's investment. The iPad pilot, the planning of, for implementation of that strategy are well underway. The most far-reaching came recently with a survey of the community. We must always endeavor to be mindful of what parents feel should be priorities, what they will support. Our future has been, has had a great deal of uncertainty based on how Lansing looks at public education, asking our parents and community for critical feedback, and giving this board direction was, was time-sensitive and well-done. With regard to student growth, you have made recommendations for the new iPad project implemented, and implemented the Cranbrook Institute Science Curriculum at the behest of the H. H. Grace, H. H. and Grace A. Dow Foundation. Moving this district forward in the new tech era, arena, all, all the while balancing best practice and the scores of opportunities we offer to our students, which distinguishes our district from most by comparison. Continuing the IB program in our high schools and continuing private support for this program provides our parents and students another educational option not available in most districts. These are just a few of the long list of accomplishments that you have, you have directed or directed to benefit the students for our district. Moving forward, we would encourage you to continue to improve the line of communications to all employee groups, and as such, and as much as possible involve all employees for their insights and input on implementations and adaptations of new programs. Based on the consensus of the, of the Board of Edu, Board's evaluations, I have concluded that we have rated, we have rated your performance as highly effective. Respectfully submitted to the Board of Education on December 10th, 2012, Kenneth Mal, President, Midland Public Schools Board of Education.
Need a motion, right?
We do.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, Chair.
We have motions and support, questions of my conclusions.
Let's vote, then we'll talk.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Well done.
Thank you.
Now, as a follow-up to that, I have one other piece that's before you this evening, and this is certainly something that needs to be discussed at this meeting. You all received an email that came from me today through Cindy, and I will read it just so that everybody is, understands what this is about. Board members, as a result of the review, I propose Mr. Allinger have his contract rolled over an additional year through June 30th, 2017, that continues the five-year rollover contract we typically have been following. And we, and we will change his contract language to reflect the rolling over of unused vacation days from 2011, 12 year to future year's use. This does not increase any cost to the district, nor does, nor does it change or treat the cap on his vacation days any differently than for the, any other district administrator at the conclusion of his service to MPS. Due to our request, or due to our request for him to resolve on major issues last year, Carl was unable to fully utilize all of his vacation last year. This just ensures and encourages Mr. Allinger to actually use his vacation days to become refreshed from the day-to-day operations of the school district's business. Questions? Pretty straightforward.
Just straightforward. No cost to the district.
No cost.
Carl, take them.
He needs time to be refreshed. The directors need him to take time for them to be refreshed.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, I don't want to leave the impression that I'm the only person here that doesn't use their vacation days. That is more a common occurrence amongst a number of administrators here, many of whom are sitting right over there, so I just, I want to be clear about that. And then just thanks for the, for the positive evaluation. You all know the recent weeks have not been easy ones necessarily, and I appreciate it. It's nothing that any superintendent is lying to you if they think that, if their ego is so large that they think they accomplish things on their own. Those four people sitting right over there make my job enormously easier, and I'm not sure I've made their job easier in the last year and a half since we've reorganized and created new positions and so on. And, and really, that reflection is something I can say about every employee group here. I mean, Midland Public Schools in this community is so fortunate to have the staff that serve them. Some of you know I've worked in business for over 10 years. This, I think, is my 25th year as an educator. So, I've had a foot in the business world. I know how hard people work there. I've worked as an educator even longer than that. And in my humble opinion, working in a public sector in a position like this demands much more of all of us and our families than most people give heedens to. And I'm privileged to work with a group that worked for, for Midland Public Schools that does it as well as this group does under what have been some pretty extraordinary circumstances in, in recent years. I'll tell you, the, the challenges have been very large for the 20J districts, as you all know. And I think we've stood the test of time, and it'll carry far beyond me, it'll carry far beyond anybody sitting over there. There's just a very hard work ethic that is part of the ethos of working as an employee for Midland Public Schools, so I'm honored to be here.
We do.
So moved. I thought we did. We not?
No, for the.
Oh, absolutely. I will certainly move approval of this as recommended. Thank you.
Support. Move by Mr. Oly, supported by Mr. Watchman. Any further discussion? If not, motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Let's take some vacation days. Okay, I lost my spot on my agenda, sorry.
Let's go to Lynn.
Recognition of Resolutions of Retiring Board Members. Mrs. Baker's starting first.
I don't know if I want to do this or not.
Be nice.
Kind of bittersweet. It's already pre-printed, so. Resolution recognizing the contribution of Mr. Ken Mal to the education of children at Midland Public Schools, Midland, Michigan. Whereas, Mr. Ken Mal has served on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education from 2004 through 2012. Whereas, during his tenure on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, Mr. Mal served as board president for two years, vice president for two years, and secretary for one year. Whereas, Mr. Mal has served on numerous boards and committees during his term with the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, adding significant views and insights as topics were discussed, recommendations were formulated, and decisions were made. Whereas, through his years of service, Mr. Mal has made an invaluable contribution to education in Midland, Michigan, always focusing on the best interest of all students. Therefore, be it resolved, the Midland Public Schools Board of Education formally recognizes Mr. Ken Mal for his eight years of dedication to the children of Midland Public Schools through his avid committed service on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, dated this 10th day of December 2012. And then to move on to Mr. Oly. Resolution recognizing the contribution of Mr. Rick Oly to the education of children at Midland Public Schools, Midland, Michigan. Whereas, Mr. Rick Oly has served on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education from 1992 through 2012. Whereas, during his remarkable 20 years on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, Mr. Oly served as a board officer 16 of those years. His service included board president for five years, vice president for two years, and treasurer for nine years. Whereas, Mr. Oly has selflessly served on numerous boards and committees during his tenure with the Midland Public Schools Board of Education. His longevity, dedication, and insightful service to the Finance Facilities and Operations Committee in particular has been especially noteworthy, astute, and truly valued. Whereas, through his years of service, Mr. Oly has made an invaluable contribution to education in Midland, Michigan, always focusing on the best interest of all students. Therefore, be it resolved, the Midland Public Schools Board of Education formally recognizes Mr. Rick Oly for his extraordinary 20 years of dedication to the children of Midland Public Schools through his passionate devoted service on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, dated this 10th day of December 2012. And Rick and Ken, we, we are going to miss you. You have mentored many, you have left quite a legacy for Midland Public Schools, and to thank you, your, some past and present board members have made a contribution to Rick, Midland High's Athletic Scholarship Fund, and to Ken, the Dow High School Athletic Scholarship Fund, since we know that these were very, very important, as well as everything in middle and public schools, but your own children were very actively involved, so we will pay it forward in your name.
Thank you. Ray Jenner, so you look.
Need to vote on the resolution, Ken.
We have to vote on the resolution?
Absolutely.
Do we have to abstain, Ken?
Do we abstain? Do we have to?
I move, I move to support. I, I move, we accept the resolutions as read.
Support.
We have a motion on the table with support. Any further discussion?
They have a framed picture.
Yes. As soon as we vote.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You have your resolution.
With that, I'm very, very both proud and saddened that I'm having these out. I've got to work with Ken for, for eight years, and Rick for the eight years, and you guys have done yeoman service through some difficult times for Midland Public Schools. So, Ken, on behalf of all board members, thank you very much. And Rick, same thing. Can't say enough, but I will, because before we move on, I have something special for Mr. Oly. It's very, very, very rare that a board member, some of our teachers make this, and some of our administrators make this, but it's very rare for a board member to impact an entire generation of students. And Rick, not to make you feel old, or you have less hair than you have, when you started, the, the kindergartners are now have careers and moved on to professions. And when you started, the children who were just born that year are graduating from college in another year. So, that is very unique, and there are very few board members. There's very few pictures up there of superintendents in Midland Public Schools history. I think there's seven, if I count correctly. There are very few members who have served 20 years, if none from the list, when I looked at the list, in the Midland Public Schools. So, with that, we have something special for you. I have a seat first. Trust me, you want this on the table. And as you open that, go ahead and open and, I'd like you to hold it up. Now, I was going to make you read that.
Maybe you should.
But that said, I think it's better I do. This is a, this is a token of our appreciation, and, and our community's appreciation. It says, Rick Oly, in recognition of 20 years tenure on Midland Public Schools Board of Education, your dedicated service has provided outstanding educational opportunities for a whole generation of Midland students. The entire community thanks you and salutes you for your service. So, thank you, Rick, very much.
Thank you. Don't make it easy, do you?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Very, very much. Wow. You need to talk first.
And I, we had that negotiation before the, the meeting had started, and I threw the short straw, so you get me first with respect to what I want to say to all of you this evening. And Rick's always longer and lengthier anyway, so it's just, it's just better. First of all, and I say to this earlier, this is bittersweet. And I'm not trying to upstage Mr. Oly, but for 40 years of my life, I've served this community in some capacity or other. Almost 30 years in law enforcement, another 10 years with the Community Foundation, and eight wonderful years with all of you. To the Carl and Gary before you, and to this agenda group, you're special. And it's going to be kind of tough not showing up on Monday nights. And somebody asked me, what are you going to do with all your Mondays? And I says, well, I'm sure I'll figure it out, but I will do, really miss part of this experience, because you immerse yourself so deeply in trying to do what's best for students. I said I wasn't going to do this. And that's why we're here. That's why everybody at this table's here. And so, to the agenda group, to the administrators in this district, job well done. Continue with what you do every, every day on behalf of our students, because we are second to none. We're an exemplary district. We'll always be an exemplary district, and let, don't let anyone tell you differently, because you just have to look at what we do, what we have, and how we do it, to know that we're, we are definitely an exemplary district. Excuse me. To our teachers and parents, they don't get any better. You know, and despite the contentious times in the, the last two years, we're the best teachers and the best district in the state of Michigan. And if you do nothing but look at the empirical, empirical data with respect to scores, we rival our peers and exceed most. And so, we need to continue to make sure that our teachers have the tools necessary and the opportunities to present things to this district that continue to make us leaders in the field of public education. To our office professionals and building managers, and to all those that work behind the scenes, those folks, faces that you commonly don't see on a daily basis, you make it tick. I mean, you make it tick. Without you, none of this works. Not the agenda group, not the administrators, not the superintendent. It's those folks that sit at the desk to make sure that schedules are proper, and buses are where they're supposed to be, and buildings are open on time. And again, those faces aren't something, somebody you would... And again, those faces aren't something, somebody you would see on a regular basis. And so, my hat's off to all of you. Speaking of on time, to our wonderful Transportation Department, who ensures that our students get to school safely every day, and how that seemingly is not a very important task in the larger scheme of things to most people. But when you see those yellow buses going down, down our streets and highways, delivering our students to a safe environment, that's critically important. And so, again, my hat's off to all of you. Cindy, you made my job easy. Gloria before you, and all those that have benefited from all of the things you've done. Being Board President does make you rather busy with phone calls and emails and follow-ups, but somehow through all of this, you've managed to keep me on track and aligned to Carl, and so that we could communicate in critical times very quickly on issues that matter most to this district. And I'll hesitate for just one moment to address Mr. Shaheen's concerns. That communication occurred, Mr. Shaheen, as recently as last week when I was in Texas hunting, about the very issue you spoke about this evening. And while we didn't have a public resolution in support of opposing that legislature, things were put in motion very quickly by this administration and this board to act on what we believe equally with respect to the poor legislation that's being introduced in Lansing. The meeting took place in my absence last Friday, Mr. Wasserman filling in on my behalf with the Board Superintendent and other members of the agenda group. So those issues are being addressed, and it tells you and shows you just how effective we are without necessarily being front page of the Midland Daily News on those issues. So, thank you for that reminder, and thank you for bringing that up this evening. And lastly, to the students of Midland Public Schools. You know, you can talk about the accolades of athletics, our academics are more than obvious, and the successes we have there. But on Saturday night, I mentioned this to Carl, and this is a great way to close. I went to the local mall, did a little Christmas shopping, and on my way in at the Salvation Army Kettle, there were two young men in chemic varsity jackets standing, ringing the bell. And I stopped and told them how proud I was of their actions. And on the way out, the guard had changed, and there were two young ladies from Dow High ringing the bell. And that shows and goes not to just the students in our district, but the character of our community. And I think it's critically important that this district continue to excel in a manner from a historical perspective that we have, and how we influence young people's lives, and not just by, through education and their experience in that, in that realm, but how we raise our children to be the kind of citizens that they've, they're turning out to be. So again, this is bittersweet, and I promised myself I would never, I wouldn't do this this evening. But obviously, the street cop toughness is starting to wane, but I will miss all of you. You will, at some point, see me at that podium on issues that I have concerns about, and I will forever be supporter, a huge supporter of this history. Thank you.
I don't have that street cop toughness by any stretch of the imagination, so I guess I, number one, want to applaud Ken for his leadership. You know, having been on the Board for 20 years, I've got a chance to watch a lot of Board members come and go. And it's always wonderful, just like I was a new Board member, we all have been through that. And to see Ken and how effective his leadership has been for the last several years, I just want to thank you for that. And it's my honor to retire with you. I want to thank Lynn for the resolution, and Jerry for the most generous gift. I never, ever thought in my mind that I've spanned a generation, quite frankly, so it does make me feel very old, and it does quickly remind me how much more hair I had 20 years ago than I do now. Not that there's any direct correlation necessarily, but nevertheless. So please indulge me a few minutes, I do have some comments I want to make, and Ken's right, I tend to be probably more long-winded than him, but there's a lot of things that have been kinda bottled up inside of me, and I don't know whether I'll be able to get them all out or not, but I will. I think, you know, the last 20 years, even though in some respects it seems like a long time, it seems like a blur to me, just a blur that seems to have just whizzed by, and I wish I could remember every one of those hundreds and thousands of moments of immense pride and reward and appreciation I've had for the opportunity to work with such incredible professionals, incredible people on the Board like I have, the leadership team, or the teaching staff, all of the support staff, all the students, all the parents, and obviously all of the, the community. It's been an honor to serve, and by far, the most rewarding volunteer activity I've ever chosen to be part of. Times have changed a lot, and I just have to have one sense of humorous moment here when I think about over 20 years ago, my very first Board election, and I brought something, and don't ask me why I've saved this. Don't ask me, I don't know why, maybe for moments like this. But over 20 years ago, Board election, it was just a different era, it just was, you know, and Jerry's been through this many times too, going back even to the 90s when he first started to run. I remember back in, I guess it would have been 1992, my family and I walked in the Memorial Day Parade as part of the campaign. And back then, I had four small children. My youngest at the time was maybe one and a half years old, and every single one of my family, myself, my wife, and our four kids, we wore these T-shirts. Somehow the shirt has gotten smaller over the years. I'm not sure, but we actually wore this in the Memorial Day Parade up and down the street. My youngest was in a wagon being pulled by one of my other kids, and all of my kids were handing out this brochure. They were going from one side of the street to the other side of the street to pass these brochures out. Back then, we mailed, we created brochures, we had, had campaign committees, fundraising committees, campaigns, write letters to the editor, knocked on doors, spoke in front of civic groups. It was a much more formal deal than I think historically has been. And yes, I did have a mustache on here, and that young lady who's on the cover of this, who is my oldest daughter, who was known as Katie then, now she's Catherine, I think she probably was in 7th grade, and Lynn knows her well. And we had to stage this picture that's kinda the joke in the family, that I had to stage as I was actually helping her with her homework. You know? This young lady is one of my four children, spent five years teaching elementary school, and is a few months away from getting her dissertation, her PhD in education and early child development, and literally somebody along with all my kids I'm very proud of, but that's, that's where we set the stage for that. Something else that is perhaps a little different is before I, in a weak moment, ran for the School Board, I had spent almost three years actively involved in stuff that really doesn't exist anymore. I was involved with something called the Curriculum Council, which some of the people here will remember. It was, I don't know how long it lasted, it lasted a long time, and it was a group of teachers, students, administrators, and citizens and parents like myself who came together to study one topic that the Board and the Superintendent agreed on. We would spend the whole school year studying it, and we'd come back at a May Board meeting to make recommendations to the Board about that particular topic. And I was fortunate enough to serve on it and chair it, and that was kinda my entry, if you will, to Board service. And perhaps even the more important thing that, again, some people over here will remember is I was one of, I think it was three citizen representatives on the first formal strategic planning committee for the Midland Public Schools back in 1990, 1991. Linda and Gary were both on that team. We actually spent two and a half or three days off-site, I forget, Wald Lake or someplace, Walden Woods, yeah, Walden Woods. We went off-site to create what is now our mission statement and a whole bunch of belief statements and strategies. That's where my enthusiasm and passion for Midland Public Schools really got lit, quite frankly, and prompted me to want to run for the School Board 21 years ago. So I still have fond memories of that, and the work of that committee still lives today. I have given the generation that Jerry, Mitch, and I span, I've worked with three superintendents. Art Frack, Gary Hughes, and Carl Ellinger. And in my mind, all three have been excellent. And I think each one of them had the right skills and leadership abilities for that time in which they served. They were exactly what we needed for the challenges that we had, and the challenges have changed, as you can imagine, over 20 years. And I still maintain that the most important decision we as a Board ever make is the hiring of a Superintendent. And so I look at the decisions that I participated in on this Board to hire Gary Hughes and to hire Carl Ellinger as the two most important and best decisions we've ever made since my time on the Board. But while we all know that the Superintendent is kind of the official leader of the district, we all know that the person who really runs the district is the Assistant. So, so thank you, Cindy. And I do have to acknowledge, I do really do want a big shout-out and acknowledge that probably the person that is most responsible, the person who did the best job in training me and keeping a smile on my face through all the ups and downs of the stresses of Board service, especially in those early years, was Gloria Shondemeyer. And I can't say enough about, I think, the world of Gloria, she's one of the special people in the world, and I believe she's served under all three superintendents, if I recall. I've been privileged to work alongside many outstanding directors, and I think in the neighborhood of about 20 directors. And I tend to use a lot of sports analogies as well, and so there's a lot of Hall of Fame directors that I've had an opportunity to, to work with over these 20 years, names like Russ Baker, Bob Markey, Joe Schmidt, Carol Feeder, Kenny Lewold, Doug Fillmore, John Bahaka, Herb Scogg, who also had the rare characteristic of also being a Board member after he served time, so don't get any ideas, you guys over there, but... And of course then Gary and Kathy and Linda, who are among the best directors I've ever had a chance to work with. And because I'm just kinda like this, I had to kinda sit and add some numbers in my head. I suspect I have probably participated in over 450 Board meetings, and maybe another 500 committee meetings as well over the course of those, those 20 years. We've also had many Hall of Fame principals and names that many of you will remember and recognize, the Mike Vazis of the world, Ray Friars, Gary Weitz, Brad Vanderleet, Jan Goodall, John Bahaka, Bud Lowry, and many others. And obviously, our current team of principals are outstanding as well. And you know, while the Board is the elected governing body of this district, and we provide leadership, we all know, we should never make any mistake about where the professional leadership comes from this district, and it's sitting in this seat and sitting in those seats, and these are the people that really help us navigate through the future. And I've been very fortunate. It almost, I don't want to say Board service has been easy, but let me tell you, it's made so much easier when you have the outstanding professional wisdom, passion, and dedication of the people that sit in these seats, and I've been fortunate to have that during my 20 years. Having been an MBS parent for 25 years, if you will, watching my four kids experience the excellence of Midland Public Schools, I estimate that my wife Nancy and I and those kids have experienced over 200 different teachers in this district. And I think, Ken, you said it really well, these are just an outstanding group of professionals that have educated, prepared, and inspired my four children in ways that I can't possibly And I've been privileged to have worked alongside about 20 different Board members as well, all of you included. And there's some Hall of Fame Board members on that list as well, and there's people sitting at these chairs here today that I will put in that category as well. People like Denise Spencer, and Lita Pfeiffer, Larry Levy, Dick Delinsky, Roger Mead, Smallwood Holloman, Kelly Buhl, Suzie LaCross, Lee Rouse, and many of you. And I've had the chance to work with Jerry and Ken and Lynn for a long time. And we're sitting in front of a couple Veteran Board members that I didn't have the privilege to work alongside, but they're Hall of Fame Board members, and their legacy carried on throughout the future Board. So I, I thank the two of you for always sitting in those chairs, pretty much for an entire 20 years I've been sitting up here as well. I have witnessed enrollment and staffing increases, and I've witnessed enrollment and staffing decreases. I've witnessed programs being added, and I've witnessed programs being curtailed. And it's amazing when I actually was kinda motivated to go back, look through the files that I've, didn't even realize I had for 20 years, and have copies of the Focus Elementary Study, the Middle School Study, the High School Study, multiple parent and citizen committees, the start of elementary foreign language, reading recovery, kindergarten complement, the Endow Program for gifted and talented, working with ISD before they became the ESA, partnering with parochial schools like we never had before. I've been witness to mileage increases, we talked about this earlier, as well as funding decreases. And yes, I do remember pre-proposal A, kind of a distant memory now, but I do vividly remember that. And I've witnessed building additions, as well as building closures. We put on additions to Midland High and Dow High during my time, and Northeast for that matter. And then obviously, we've closed not only the five elementary schools, but schools called Leapart and Ashman that I was involved with. I remember when there's no computer labs. I remember the very first computer lab at Chestnut Hill Elementary. And I hate to admit this, but I remember Franklin computers as well. I think Gary still has one in his office. I remember full complements of curriculum coordinators, department heads, counselors, media professionals, peer professionals. I remember maintaining the PRME discipline that our predecessors put in place before we ever had a sinking fund. I remember Board meetings not being televised, and I remember what a big deal it was when we finally made the decision to allow them to be televised. But regardless of what the external environment has done to us and for us, what has not changed is the talent and the commitment, the passion, and the excellence of Midland Public Schools. And this has been the one constant in my 20 years. I think I characterized at a previous Board meeting, my, the first 10 years of, on the Board was one of growth, kinda building for the future and change. Lot of committees, and lot of studies about adding things. The second 10 years, obviously, we're more focused on budget challenges, enrollment decreases, reduction staffing levels, and reductions of some programs. And the next 10 years, which are now entrusted to all of you, as well as Scott and Kim, it's gonna be all about change. It's gonna be all about innovation and how education is delivered in the future. And I think the delivery model's gonna have to change, because I don't think the budget challenges will go away. There'll be continued pressure to reduce costs, but clearly, there's a few programs left for us to cut that will give any kind of significant budget relief. So that means fundamental change in how we deliver education to our community. And it's scary, but I think it's really exciting too, quite frankly. And so as I look up at the makeup of our Board, which has changed dramatically in the last few years, from a very veteran, experienced Board to one filled with new energy, new perspectives, and new approaches, I'm pretty upbeat and optimistic about the future of Midland Public Schools. And I welcome Scott and Kim as they join the rest of you up here in that journey going forward. So I need to say a few heartfelt thank-yous. Carl and Directors, thank you for your leadership and for your friendship. You work long hours, and you're very sensitive, but you're also emotionally tough. You balance the educational needs with financial realities. You carry the challenge of leading a large district in a community with extremely high expectations and continuing a long track record of success. And you are passionate about what you do. Principals, teachers, and all the Midland Public School staff, I've gotten to know a very high number of you, including Mr. Shaheen sitting there in the back. And from my vantage point as a Board member, as a Midland Public School for 25 years, and as a community member, I know how fortunate the community is to have all of you, and how good all of you are at what you do. And thanks for taking care of my four kids. Making me proud to be one of your Board members. Parents in the community, thank you for entrusting me with this role, representing you for the past 20 years and elected me five times. It's been my honor. To my wife, Nancy and my four kids, my now four adult kids. This job can be time-consuming. Frequent meetings, long meetings, phone calls at home, attending events, sometimes at the expense of being home or attending my own kids' events. It can be emotionally draining, stressful, and frustrating. At times, it can leak into your moods or behavior at home. During very contentious times, it leaked into my kids' classrooms. But Nancy, Catherine, Nathan, Lauren, Ryan, have all been incredibly supportive. And I think we all get our pay in many ways here. And I think we all get our pay in many ways here. It's certainly not in dollars and cents, none of us would have it that way. But I think, given each of my kids, each of my four kids, their diplomas, it's worse than dad. But also, as a Board of Education member, some of the proudest moments I've ever had. Fellow board members, the camaraderie, legality, trust, and teamwork we have shared together is what drove me to keep coming back. There is no more important volunteer work in this community than service on the Board of Education. And there's no group I've been more proud of to be associated with than all of you and all of those that preceded you. So my final comments are these. The best advice I received twenty years ago from veteran board members still is advice that I think is relevant today. Number one, don't micromanage. In fact, don't manage, just lead. The greatest leadership we have is right here and it's right there. Do everything you can to support, listen to, trust, and encourage them. Challenge them absolutely and hold them accountable, but recognize they provide the expertise, the continuity, the stability, and the leadership that will take this district forward to a new level of excellence. And in my twenty years, our boards have done very well at this. Number two, lead with the long term in mind. Lead as though you will be on this board forever, and that you will be held accountable for the quality and financial success, as much for five or ten years from now as you will be for just the next year. MPS has a great history of boards of education because our predecessors made great decisions with the long term in mind. Make decisions and take actions that are sustainable. Act, don't react. We all get emails and letters or hear comments in private or in public that are hard to hear sometimes. Sometimes they're framed with emotion, sometimes they're laced with inaccuracies or misrepresentations. Oftentimes, others have agendas. Board members as individuals and as unified board can't afford to have any agendas other than providing the best education for all of our students now and into our future. Number three, listen. Listen to students, teachers, and parents, listen to the community, but more importantly, listen to your professional leadership team, and listen to each of your fellow board members. And most importantly, listen to your heart. You know what is right. Number four, learn from each other and value the diversity of the knowledge, the experience, and the thought that exists among you. And remember the words of Ken Blanchard, "None of us is as smart as all of us." And lastly, amidst all the serious issues and challenges and important decisions, take time, smile, to laugh, and to celebrate. And be proud and thankful for all we have, and celebrate all that is good in Midland Public Schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Wow. And now, you know why I went first.
Wow.
It's all good. Nice job, Rick. Okay, now we can take a deep breath and move on to curriculum and instructions, 5.1, Mr. Kaminsky. No report, I'm sorry. Dr. Allison?
Yep.
Sorry.
We don't, but it doesn't seem fair that I should have to go next.
Sorry.
But I will add to some of the good thoughts that we have about this whole district, because my item is that of information. The information item is about the leadership from the Alton B Dow Home and Studio, and particularly about Craig McDonald. Craig has been a valuable partner from our community, and he has been very, very supportive of the International Baccalaureate Program in particular. And in the past, he has done many good things for that program, including five summer internships for the Theory of Knowledge students last summer. He collaborates weekly to help teach the class. He provides staff from the Home and Studio. He coordinates other agencies and gets speakers. We've had speakers from Northwood, from the Net Zero Home, from Dow Gardens. He hosted last year at the Home and Studio, the IB Visual Arts in, at 2011, I'm sorry, last year we had it in this building, 2011. He hosts the IB Psych students. He's hosted parent nights for the Theory of Knowledge students. He serves on the IBAB CP Committee as well. He visits our classrooms regularly and has often served as a guest speaker. Moreover, he worked with the Chippewa Nature Center and has arranged for canoeing tours for our students from the IB classes if they're interested. But most recently, what brings this item to the agenda tonight is to thank Craig and the Home and Studio for one final thing. Craig has put together busing so that our students will be able to visit the Edsel and Eleanor Ford Home. And by visiting that home, they will be able to do a lot of compare and contrast, high level critical thinking, and comparing that with the Dow Home as well. And we weren't sure we would be able to do that, but Craig was able to put together the busing for that as well. So they're paying for the busing, our students will just show up and go. So we'd like to thank him again because of being in this community. We are again proud and thankful to have such members, and the students of the Theory of Knowledge class would particularly like to thank Craig and the Home and Studio.
Thank you. As a segue from that and toward to the next piece, the IB Committee that I recently involved myself with will be meeting there this Wednesday at Craig's invitation. Again, another very supportive piece by Craig and the Home and Studio. So thank you again, Craig, and to the Home and Studio for the opportunity to present it to the students, and thank you to Dr. Allison for that report. Moving on to FFO, Mr. Ole, I know you have a report.
For the last time.
For the last time.
For the last time. You're right, I've spent many years on this committee, and probably, quite frankly, some of my favorite, most challenging, but just engaging, meetings ever have been on the FFO Committee, and longest meetings, I must say, and this was one of those. Mrs. Klein reported that Midland Public Schools participate in Autobin, coordinated by the Tlaire Lademan Regional ESD. We expect to have the bid results to report at the next FFO meeting. The committee reviewed the average teacher salary cost for the past seven years, and as a result of the contract settlement with the MCEA, the per FTE costs are at their lowest level since the 2006 and '07 school year. And Mrs. Klein will add comparisons to the state average and bring a revised chart to the next meeting. The committee participated in a conference call with William St. Amore, who you met earlier tonight from Cobalt Community Research, to review the preliminary survey results. And as you know already, he gave a full report to us tonight. And following the presentation, the committee discussed the results in detail and how the board might wish to use them and more to come in future board meetings. And then lastly, Mr. Ellinger and Mrs. Klein gave an update on the potential for reducing energy usage by entering into a contract with Synergistic, and a representative from that committee will be invited to address questions at the next FFO meeting. That was the meeting. My thanks to Mrs. Klein.
Mrs. Klein, you have some gifts for us and a number of them.
Yes, we have a tremendous listing of gifts this evening. We'll begin with the donation of items. KG Dusso donated a flute, and Dawn Smith, a trumpet, to our music program. Then we have gifts totaling $12,396.33 that we've already received and processed. Donors are the Midland Circle Business Association for the materials for the Holiday Art Window Contest for Grades Eight through Twelve. Human Resource Dynamics is a memorial for Mr. Norm Dahl, who was the former elementary principal at both Parkdale and Plymouth, and we are going to purchase the book, The Giving Tree, for the Media Center. We've worked with his daughter, who happens to be a teacher for us, Kay Rogers at Midland High, and she felt that was an appropriate book. The Midland High School Athletic Booster Club has provided support for tennis uniforms. And then we have a number of gifts from various grant funds at the Midland Area Community Foundation. The first is the Mary E. McIntyre Memorial Athletic Fund, providing support for the Midland High School Athletic Department, as well as the Athletic Participation Fee Scholarship Fund. Dow Chemical Community Gives Fund provided support for a number of different activities, and you may remember, we took one of these in a few weeks ago. The premise for this grant is that while the grantees may not have the money, they have time, and they have some ability to do something that gives back to the community, hence the name, the Community Gives Fund. And I know at least one of these clubs, I talked with their advisor, and their service project was to volunteer some of their time at Shelter House, and the students who did that were so impressed with what they were able to do and the need that they continued volunteering past what they had committed to do for the project. So I think it's a wonderful program, and it really does encourage philanthropy in all its forms. Then the Midland County Youth Action Council, which is a granting organization of the Community Foundation, which is actually operated by students and allows them to sit in the role of grantors, supported a number of programs across the district at the elementary, the middle, and the high school. Then we have the Seibert School Office Fund and Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee partnering to provide support for a mini-support that the two schools are going to do together. Then we have a rather sizable gift that requires your action, and you heard a reference to it this evening. This is part one of a two-part commitment from the Roland M. Gerstacker Fund to support an international exchange program with Taipei, Taiwan. And we have, Midland High School will be taking a group of students along with some teachers in April of 2013, and sort of a pilot for them, and we hope to see that program expand and increase our international opportunities. So that single gift does require your approval this evening.
A move of support of extending the gift.
Support. Mr. Ole, supported by Dr. Kaminsky. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you, and thank you to the Roland M. Gerstacker Foundation for such, and to all groups that participated in gifts this evening. What an amazing, we're not even halfway through, well, not quite halfway through the year. It's pretty amazing. Okay, before we move on to human resources, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend because our deadline is 9:29 for most of this. We shouldn't be real late, but we need to cover that, so.
And will we extend another fifteen minutes?
Support.
Moved and supported to extend till 9:45. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you.
And to let the record show that we had to extend Ken's last meeting.
Yeah. Good to know. Okay, with that, Mr. Vilindi in human resources.
Thank you. The board and the staff extend their deepest sympathy to the families of Mrs. Winona Burks, who passed away November 19th. She was a vocal music teacher for Midland Public Schools for twenty years, retiring in 1986, and Mrs. Mary Jane Eisenhardt, who passed away December 2nd. She was a member of the food service staff at Midland High School for twenty-five years, retiring in 1996.
Thank you.
And then for action, administration is seeking approval to expand the Administrator Handbook Language Regarding Professional Development Tuition Reimbursement to Include Sketches, a new term from the state, state continuing education clock hours that are completed through an approved certification program. Basically, this has no monetary implications for what we already do for a number of years. The Administrator Handbook has spelled out that there can be some tuition reimbursement for administrators for keeping their certificate, their administrative certification up to date. With some recent changes in the law, any new administrator who comes in either needs to have a master's in school administration to get that certification, or there's a route for alternative certification for administrators, which is less than the full thirty hours that you might need for a master's, should you have another master's, but not in that topic area. So what the state has indicated is they have approved an MASSP, Michigan Association of Secondary School Principles, alternative certification program that, and it's a very credible organization, it looks like a very credible program, but in this case, it isn't tuition, credits that they are granting, but through some online modules and training and some onsite conferencing, they are giving administrators what would have been known earlier this year as SBCU's, which are now changed to sketches. Well, what does this have to do with the Administrator Handbook Language? That Administrator Handbook Language always talked in terms of credits, okay? Now, a very credible organization with a very credible program is doing it through the sketches, and all we want to be able to do is add the term sketches into the Administrator Handbook, so administrators who choose this route to the alternate Administrator Certification can be reimbursed, because currently, that language isn't in there. In fact, even SBCU's isn't in there, because the original language was well before anybody had thought up those, yeah, those abbreviations.
Thank you for that explanation.
I'm overproofable, but it's reset.
Moved by Mr. Ole.
I'll support.
Seconded by Mr., supported by Mr. Wasserman. We did understand that, because, just so you know, that was very well defined. With that, we have a motion on the table, we have questions or comments. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. You have your sketches, Mr. Vilindi. Yeah, we did get it. Okay, correspondence to and from the board, letter to the board, you see the correspondence in the agenda, and moving on to scheduled activities, I have a note from Cindy. Thank you. See, I tell you how it works here, that to remind everybody that the meeting on January 14th starts at 4:00 PM. Be there, please. So, and the rest of the scheduled, till the end of March, spring break, and then on to June for the remainder of the school calendar year. So with that, we have about eighteen, no, seventeen minutes to get through study discussion. I will start to my right with Mrs. Gordon.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I just wanted to say that I was really enthused about the results of that survey. That was great, getting all that feedback, and it was so good, and again, it just shows us what great schools we have here in Midland and how fortunate we are. And that just kind of leads me into saying that I was thinking, what Jerry was talking about tonight, I was thinking about it earlier today, that while Rick has been serving on the board, that was the entire time my older daughter was in school, in Midland Public Schools, and a good share of her educational experience here also. Ken was serving on the board, my younger daughter as well. And so as a parent who's had kids in these schools, while you've been serving on the board, I thank you. I give you my thanks. I think, I know, my family has benefited greatly from your service to the board and to the community, and I thank you so much. I just, I never cease to be amazed at the things that the kids, our kids can do when they come out of Midland Public Schools, and just seeing my older daughter and how well-prepared she was for college, and what a great experience that's been for her, and I'm so grateful to all of her teachers and to the staff and the administrators and to the board. So I thank you for your service to the board. I am very happy to have spent this year serving with you, so.
Thank you.
Give you my best wishes. I hope you find real interesting things to do on Monday evenings.
Me too. Thank you.
I'm hoping they're going to be here.
Give me a call, Ken, we'll ride together.
Carpool.
We'll work that out.
Rick said something in his remarks that I thought was really, really important, and those are the priorities of what board members should be and what they should do, to lead, reflect the community, hire the right people, and have them do their jobs and hold them accountable, and go from there. But one thing he also said, that it's almost, it's a cliche, obviously, but it hit me tonight, and that's that things will change. In his twenty years, things have changed remarkably, and in Ken's eight years, things have changed remarkably. And they will change a lot. In another three to four years, we'll turn around and go, what happened in those last three to four years? And Rick said it right. The main thing, as long as we keep the kids at the front of our focus and getting our children in this community educated and to be what we asked for in our mission state... children in this community educated, and to be what we asked for in our mission statement, we will have made the right decisions. We're handed the pot of money, we get to set the priorities, but we have to set the priorities based on what the community is telling us, and that's what we endeavor to do. And I look at evidence already creeping in. You know, we're talking about, survey comes back, says, oh, we'd like new and different things, or more expanded car offerings, and look what we're talking about tonight. Look what we approved tonight. Just, I mean, talk about what people may have seen as maybe mundane, but we changed a biology course to offer to more kids. We changed a calculus course to allow kids that may not want to leap to the CD to be able to take calculus before they go to thing. So those are the changes we got to continuously seek to make and rely on our staff to bring those forward to us to help kids. And to Rick and Ken, I will assure you, change will continue, but you guys have laid the foundation, you know, for the last 20 years, the last eight years, that foundation was laid. How do we move next so that we can all turn around and say, look what we built upon your legacies? So thank you for your service, and we'll do you proud.
Angela.
Two things first. Last Monday night, I went to the New Tech presentation, and I want to really thank all the parents that showed up. I, there were a lot of parents there, and I really appreciate all their feedback. I had the opportunity after, with a group of parents outside of the auditorium, to hear some of their comments, and I still am receiving comments even today. I had a couple of parents say things to me, and I really appreciate the parents being involved in that way and giving us feedback, because that's what we really need on this, so. And then lastly, to you two, I'm going to really miss you, and I really hope that you at least will be around to offer advice if we need it, and we can call you and seek your counsel. But thank you so much for your service.
I also, with Angela the other night at the New Tech, and fascinating, Randy did a great job, and it was nice to have Paul Buck there, and I learned a lot, too. And I've sat in on a lot of meetings and with the visits, but they did a marvelous job presenting. And as Angela said, there's a lot of questions, a lot of positive feedback, so as we move forward, it'll be very valuable. And then, on another note, I was able to attend the Spanish Fiesta, and it's always a fun evening, and lots of people were there, and lots of good food and dance, and everybody, everybody seemed to enjoy theirs themselves. So it's just another indication of some of the great extra offerings that our staff provides for our children and their families. We all got Christmas cards, and thank you to the students and the teachers that take the time to do that for us. And not only that, so many buildings are doing their food collections and their adoptive families, and it just speaks along the line of what we've all talked about is, and Rick and Ken both alluded to, we develop great citizens, not only great students. And the families and the schools are, and the community are to be commended for that. And lastly, Rick and Ken, sitting here kind of between the two of you, all your wisdom, all your guidance, your legacy, your leadership. You've mentored an awful lot of us, and it's because of some of you, we are here. And I do remember Rick in that yellow shirt. I was on the sidelines cheering him on, but when I ran, there was no way I was walking in a parade. But thank you, and thank you to your families, and because we all know that it takes, it takes time out of your family, but we do it because we're passionate about not only our children, but children everywhere. And we thank our teachers and our administrators, and everyone behind and in front of the scenes, because we are proud to be here. And I, it will be different. I look forward to a new year, a new board, and in the meantime, Merry Christmas. Relax, and we'll come back all refreshed.
John, very, very, very nice. Thanks to the donors with, in addition to the items that are donated, over $62,000 just in one board meeting. It's extremely impressive. Thank you very much to the community. I think that, I want to thank Midland Daily News for covering the iPad rollout. It was really nice. I know Mr. Sobol and Mr. Sabrin have been instrumental in getting this going, and it was nice to see the kids engaged in the classroom and in a new way. And so the Kaminsky family is one of those families that is, with having three kids in the elementary school, it was a good chance that one of our kids would be involved. And I've never seen my kids spend so much time on math and learning and letters, and the TV at our house was not on. Our kids spent a good bit of Saturday and Sunday engaged in curriculum and lesson planning that their kindergarten teacher had them, had set up, programmed, and had instructed them on the iPad. So I tell it's fabulous. We talk about seeing the results of the Cobalt survey that talk about not just having technology, but having it targeted and having it teacher-driven and engaged for a specific purpose. And I'm impressed. I want to see more, I want to see how the program works and so forth. So that's just really exciting. So thanks to Mr. Sobol and Mr. Sabrin for getting that out. The past two weeks, I've been very impressed with my colleagues as far as legislative effort. I think we have gotten some attention on this fairly quickly. I know a lot of times as board members, we are criticized for not being more active. I've made lots of phone calls, I've talked to community members to call, we try to meet with our legislators. We're not down in Lansing all the time and commute all the time, but I'm impressed, and I thank the full board members for being involved. I think these issues with the Oxford study and what's referred to as the EAA formation is troubling, and I don't think that anybody agrees with how fast of a direction that's going. So I've been impressed with our, my colleagues' efforts on that. Lynn, I also did go to the MPS Fiesta night, and it's exciting to see the kids engaged, learning what their, what other cultures have, globalized perspective and so forth. That was very exciting. Thanks to Ms. Benzinger and Jennifer Brines for inviting us out. It was really nice. And then last, I had a chance to go to robotics competition for elementary students and middle school students. And it took me a while to go through the season as a coach and to go through the tournament to realize this is kind of is a project-based learning in its form, that the kids presented their project and their idea, their solution to a problem where the solution did not exist. They built a robot, they programmed computers, they had to effectively present themselves. All the skills that they learned at the elementary school, middle school level, they were putting into play to deliver solutions that didn't exist, unique thinking, creative thinking, teamwork. And the way that they were judged is on teamwork, collaboration, cooperation, and it was just amazing, and how well that they did. And at the competition, we had five teams compete at the regional level, and two went on to the state competition. So I know we had teams from Woodcrest, from, two at Jefferson, one at Northeast, I believe one at Adams also as well. So it was just really great. I think they did our community proud in skill applications and so forth. And then also, to end on a Christmas note, I have a Christmas card here from Central Middle School and also from Plymouth Elementary. So hopefully, everybody during the holidays gets a chance to rest, recuperate, spend some time with family and friends, and Merry Christmas to our MPS family. Mr. Ole.
I think I probably said more than enough earlier. I just want to thank everybody for your nice comments and your sentiments and the gifts and the announcements, and appreciate it very, very much. You will all be very much missed. This is, it's all about people. What you miss is, you miss the people. I just want to acknowledge, I guess, both Ken and Carl. Certainly, we did Carl's evaluation tonight, highly deserved. And then Ken, not only is this his last board meeting after eight years, but he's completing two years as president of the board. And there's a couple of us here that know what it's like to be president of the board. And it's not an easy job, especially in challenging times, as Ken has been faced for the last couple of years and stuff. And I just want to kind of thank you for your leadership, Ken, and I want to thank Carl for his leadership. And, you know, when it comes down to leadership, you know, it's the board president and it's the superintendent that all of us really look to, quite frankly. And leadership is not just about having skills and abilities as an individual. And so I think Carl said it well, leadership is all about how do you effectively create, develop, engage the team, the broader team, the team of board members, the team of directors, the team of all of the staff of Midland Public Schools, and ultimately, it's the community. And the two of you have engaged the broader team exceedingly well, and that's what makes us successful, because of your individual leadership that engages everybody else to make this district successful. And I just wanted to thank you for your years of as president, as well as your eight years. And I want to thank you for your leadership this past year and every single year that you've been with us. We're fortunate to have had you, and we're very fortunate to have you. So thank you, Rick.
Thanks. Okay, before I get all emotional again, we have a slate of officers for the Board of Education for 2013. Is that the actual item this evening? Is that?
Oh, it's just an announcement.
It's an announcement, okay. So with that, and we've held that, it's pretty close to our chest, I don't know, too many people know other than the committee, which was Lynn and Rick, and thank you for being very understanding with me traveling and how we got that completed, but it was well-vetted. So next year's slate of officers will be, Jerry will be president if he is so inclined. Lynn will be vice president. Angela will be treasurer, and John will be secretary. And unless somebody has some notable objections to that, that will be your slate of officers for next year's Board of Education. So, okay. Now, I don't generally want to go out feisty, but thank you, Mr. Shaheen, for kindling my, what was a very contentious moment while I was in Texas hunting. I want to equate the effort in Lansing with respect to what they're doing or trying to do as to being somewhat of a replica of what has been happening very often in Washington. And that's to force local units of government, basically, ours being the public schools, into some things I believe are inherently bad for our students, not just Midland Public, but public education in general. And I'll take that position. I actually was standing in camouflage in the middle of, God knows where I was at, talking with Mr. Somis's office and Mr. Molinar's office, conveying my thoughts on that. I think that we have slowed the process to some extent, hopefully, so that it can probably be, it can be looked at with greater due diligence, and with hopes that at the end of this process, they will do what's best for students in Michigan, and again, not just in Midland Public. I'm hopeful that our message resonated, but again, there are no guarantees. So I'll get off my soapbox and again, on that issue, and thank all of you again for being who you are and what you represent here sitting at this table. You're an outstanding board, we're an outstanding district. We don't need to take second chair to anybody in the state of Michigan. And you always need to know that what we do here is in the best interest of students, and you are policymakers. We don't involve ourselves with day-to-day things. That's not what we pay these wonderful people to do, or we pay them to do this, I should say. And I would hope that in the coming years, that that tradition with respect to what these four people and Mr. Ellinger bring to you, you will be those policymakers that make great decisions for our students. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ellinger for his final announcements.
Well, I think I have 55 seconds to do it by your motion, so I will just say this very quickly. The comments that I usually end the meeting with on students, I can hold off, and we can do that in January. I will tell you that this is, I've been superintendent of schools for 11 and a half years, and I have not served with any two board members more astute and really on top of their job and passionate, Ken, than you and Rick. Two of the very best that I've had a chance to work with. So your leadership will be very missed by this Board of Education, as you've heard your colleagues express tonight. So I will miss you personally and professionally, and really glad to hear that you'll co-chair the campaign for the election in May, so.
Must have tuned out for a while or something, Ken. I miss you, miss you.
That's it.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Nope.
If not, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.